Good evening and welcome to the Tempe City Council meeting here at the Tempe History Museum for September 26, 2019. For all those that are able, could you please rise, join us with the Pledge of Allegiance? First, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance, but then we'll have a moment of silence. What allegiance?
To the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda is our meeting minutes. Councilmember Navarro.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like for the approval council meeting minutes.
Delayed.
Accepting of Board and Commission Committee meeting minutes, B1 through 11.
It's been moved by Councilmember Navarro. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Aradano Savage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those, same sign. That motion does carry forward. With that, now we move on to reports and announcements, and I have a couple of announcements. I'm going to come down to the podium. Could we have the domestic violence squad from our police department, our CARE7 responders, and our any Family Justice Commission members present? Could you please come up? Right here, right here, please. Yeah, who wants to be by the side? Look at that. Hey, how are you? Alrighty, this is a large group of individuals, is really, really a testament to the city's efforts on addressing the issues of domestic violence. As you can see with our first responders, our social workers, and our policy advisors present, Tempe does take a holistic approach to addressing and caring for victims of domestic violence. I also want to give a shout out to the role that Maricopa Association of Government has taken to bring attention to the devastating statistics. The Regional Domestic Violence Council has done a lot of great work on getting municipalities to work together as a region to better respond and address the issues associated with this issue. Purple is the official color for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, so the city of Tempe has once again been able to light our city hall purple. Thank you to Charlie Blading and his team for that. And with that, I do have a proclamation that I would like to read, where it states, "Whereas domestic violence is a pervasive problem that affects one in four women and one in seven men in Arizona, and the trauma and suffering the trauma and suffering caused by domestic violence destroys families, threatens the safety of the neighborhoods, and weakens the ability of communities to thrive." And whereas in Arizona last year, there were 55 domestic violence-related deaths due to domestic violence-related incidents, and whereas it is our responsibility as residents of this state to support each other in advocating nonviolence and securing a future for our children and safe families. And whereas Maricopa County spends an estimated $18 million to $26 million a year addressing domestic violence through criminal justice system and making domestic violence one of our biggest challenges that needs a solution. And since 1999, Maricopa Association of Governments has coordinated a regional response to domestic violence through the criminal justice system with the development of the regional plan to end domestic violence. And whereas in observance of Domestic Violence Awareness Month, will create awareness, educate, and strengthen the message that we can substantially promote all of our state and nation to join us in our campaign advocating for nonviolence and make a solemn commitment to end the violence, promote peace, making our community a safer place to live. And whereas the city of Tempe will light city hall purple in recognition of Domestic Violence Awareness Month on October 1, 2019. Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of Tempe, Arizona, do hereby declare as October 2019 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Tempe, Arizona. Let's give these great individuals a round of applause, this great team. We've got to have the show, the star of the show here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next announcement I have, Adrian and the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee appointees. For those that are not aware, the city of Tempe does have a Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee that does incredible work to give youth a voice in local government. The commission was established in 1980 and is comprised of 100% from a variety of schools in Tempe. In Section 5.1, the council will be voting to approve the appointed members to this commission, and we're excited to have them here today with some of the appointees. Will you please introduce yourself, if you, those appointees for the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee? If you can come forward, if you're here. I know you guys are sitting right in front of me, so. If you could, could you introduce yourself and tell us what school you guys attend? You had to go first.
Hi, my name is Sarah.
Come over here.
Hi, my name is Sarah, and I go to Laird Elementary School.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sarabi, I go to Basis.
Hi, my name is Liliana Pearson, and I go to Kyrene Middle School.
Hi, my name is Sophia Pirano, and I go to McClintock High School.
Cool treasures?
Sure.
Hi, I'm Jack Mache, and I go to Woods International Academy.
Hi, my name is Tatum McDonald, and I go to Chandler Preparatory Academy.
My name is Ron. It's the Tempe Academy of International Studies.
My name is, oh, okay. Hi, my name is Mary, and I go to Basis.
Let's give these new members of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee a round of applause. I do want to thank you guys for being here today, and I really want to thank you for your interest in serving the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. We look forward to seeing all the great work that you guys are going to be doing, and we look forward to seeing you guys at the town hall, okay? Alright, thank you. Alright, Mr. Manager, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We do have a couple of presentations for you this evening. First, we're going to have a presentation on right-of-way landscaping.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Sean Thompson. I'm Transportation Maintenance Supervisor. I oversee the right-of-way landscape and the graffiti program. Tonight, I'll be going over the right-of-way landscape updates. Right-of-way landscape performance measure falls under our quality of life, which is 3.23, and what we want to achieve is very satisfied or satisfied with quality landscape maintained along our streetways greater than or equal over natural benchmark as measured in our community survey. And I'll mention the community survey a little bit further in the presentation. Our target was 54%, and our baseline is 63. So how much landscape do we maintain in our right-of-ways? About 35% of the landscape is maintained by the city, which is about 7.5 million square feet of landscape. Additional landscape of the 60 other 5% is maintained by commercial properties, our residential properties. Back to the community survey, when it's done, it doesn't differ from the two. It involves all of us, city landscape. So let's get into the fun. What have we accomplished in the last six years with capital improvement in the right-of-way landscape? We have renovated 1.5 million square feet of landscape. We have planted over 1,200 new trees in our right-of-way through the CIP and also partnerships with SRP, Right Tree, Right Place. We have also bid over 10,000 plants in our right-of-way. We have placed over half a million tons of ground cover. And out of that 750, 7.5 million square feet of landscape, we've broken it down to 486 locations. Out of those 480 locations, I have gone through and done an assessment of all the locations of quality of landscape in that, in those areas. 156 of them have been revitalized. So let's go back a little bit of history here. This is over on Scotts Road and Curry. It's one of the first locations that I revitalized. But let me point out five important factors when I go and do an assessment of our right-of-ways. Number one, first, irrigation. Do we have irrigation? Do we have the same amount of pressure at the beginning of the irrigation to the end of the irrigation? What is our tree situation out there? Is there trees? What's the health of the trees? And what's the tree canopy? Which is also false, another performance measure that we're working with our shade canopy, which I'm working with Craig Hayden and our new urban forester, Richard Atkins. What's the plant material out there? Is there plant material? And what's the health of the plant material? What kind of ground cover do we have? And most importantly, is it attractive? Is it a good-looking landscape? So as you can see, in 2014, this particular landscape was challenging. It had a little, it's a little outdated. But this picture right here of 2019 was taken about a month and a half ago. We have a great shade canopy, live, vibrant landscape. So the most important thing, well, how much does this cost? So the last six years, the investment in the CIP program, we have spent $1.901, $1,900,000 in investment and revitalizing our landscape, which on the cost of $1.26 a square foot. So we're really doing a good job on revitalizing our landscape. When we started the program in 2014, the annual budget was about $300,000, and through the years has increased up to about $500,000. Now, this is Warner Road and I-10. This is a good description of showing how we do our assessment out there. When we did this one in 2016, the irrigation out there was shot. We're losing that tree. In 2019, this is what we have right now. It's one of the biggest compliment landscapes that we do get a comment on. I get a lot of residents call me and liking the way that the landscape looks and the way that we designed this one. And look at the growth of the tree. We saved the tree. So as we move on in our right-of-ways, these are the support selection areas that we selected this year to revitalize. Warner from Rule to McClintock, Southern from Priest to Price, Mill from Rio's Lotto to Washington, and Rule from Warner to Knox. I'd like to point out, this is one picture, it's over on Priest and Fifth Street. Now, in my family, I'm known as the worst picture taker that can be there. If there's a finger in there, there's a head missing, I took the picture. But this is one of more picture pictures I have taken recently, because it describes what we're trying to accomplish in our right-of-way landscape. Right there, we can tell that we have good water working, because the plants are vibrant. We have shade, because when I went out and did this particular area, I do all the designs in the right-of-way landscapes. That's how we save costs in them. We have a nice palette of plants out there. We have shade, as it comes, and it's finding what I believe our residents and visitors of Tempe do like. And that ends my presentation.
Councilmember Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd like to thank the council, and years ago, this is one of the things that I started my campaign on, and the council approves what we're seeing now today. And I'd just like to say that the reason why it's so important for our landscape to be really top-notch is it's what Tempe is all about. It's the attractiveness when you come into Tempe. You know you're coming into a place where it's different from the other places. And that is what we wanted to achieve out of this. I think a great example is coming across the I-10 from Phoenix to Tempe. You can noticeably see the difference when you cross from Phoenix to I-10, which says a lot about what we are doing. I always want to challenge to make sure that we don't let our guard down on this. Obviously, with landscape and, and over the years, we're going to have to replace, we're going to have to improve. And one of the things, you know, when we do our landscape, landscaping is, and to your point, the health of the vegetation, how we maintain the vegetation, and then for this council too, if we're not doing it, the replacement of the vegetation or the trees, because we need to make sure that we're not just letting plants or trees die and then just letting them sit, or letting that area sit there idle for years, years, and years. We actually have a program to replace those pieces, so it still stays vibrant. And I think that, you know, what we're going to do here in the future, when we talk about right-of-way walls, it complements those landscapes. You mean, the right-of-way walls that we see up to residential properties, those are the property owners, they own those walls. But we're going to implement a pilot plan to take, to, to address that situation where we have the right-of-way walls, and we maintain a good look, kind of like Broadway Wall, for example. We're going to try to enhance the improvement of those areas. And when you enhance the improvement of the areas, enhance the improvement of the communities, you get investments in the neighborhoods. And I think this speaks a lot about this council, investing in the right-of-ways, investing in the vegetation, investing in, in new ideas to pilot within our community, because we are an aging community, we're a landlocked community, and we only have one shot at doing a lot of this stuff. I think this is an opportunity to keep on improving what our residents need. So I'd like to thank this council for backing this. I'd like to thank you for providing, you know, the program and the cost savings that goes along with it, with doing it in-house. But I also want to make sure that the council is constantly being challenged to, we need to keep on improving, we need to keep on thinking of what are those things that make our community look better? Artistic projects, I know that in some of the right-of-ways, we have some artistic landscaping art projects, so to speak, and it really enhances what the neighborhood's about. And not every neighborhood should look the same. Every neighborhood should have a unique value when you cross different parts of Tempe. So I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Navarro.
Councilmember Adams?
Yes, I just want to say thank you too. You're doing a great job, and I've gotten a lot of feedback from the different residents. They're noticing these improvements, and it's meaning a lot to them. It also increases home values when we have our right-of-ways look like this. And I just want to make sure that you have enough staff to support also maintaining them after, because I know a lot of times we get them in, and then we have contractors come out and, and water them or keep track of the irrigation. So that's been a concern, because I think sometimes the contractors have dropped the ball on it. So just whatever we can do as a council to support this, I agree with what Councilmember Navarro said, and I just think we need to keep going in this direction. But if, if you need more help, please let us know.
Thank you, Councilmember Adams.
Savage?
Yeah, Sean, I just want to say thank you so much for your work. I mean, if you look at some of these pictures, I know you're focused on this one, but the other ones within the presentation are just as really amazing, because they have the before and after. I like those a little bit better, so nice job on those. But, you know, I agree with what my council colleagues say, and how important this is. And I was wondering, do you have a list, a priority list of other areas that you're, you're working on or you want to do?
Yeah, I have gone through the whole 486 locations that we have deemed from the 7.5 million square feet, and then assessments of all of them, with those five factors that I mentioned, irrigation, tree canopy. So each year, I go out and just kind of figure out what's the best area, what one is most needed, so I go basically on the assessments that we've got.
Perfect, I think that's great. And I would agree with Councilmember Adams too, in the sense of resources and making sure that you're able to hit your goals and, and, you know, do the work the way you want to do it and have it done too, right? Because obviously, you're being very efficient with $1.26, that's pretty, that's pretty great. Pretty sure, my landscaper, my husband's cost isn't like that. So thank you for that. I appreciate it. And yeah, so if there are new resources that need to be increased, I think that we need to know that. But also, I love the idea that when people drive into Tempe, they know it's Tempe. And they, they know it's Tempe because of the work that you and your team do. So thank you very much for that.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Navarro.
Vice Mayor Keating?
So thanks, and Joel, Councilmember Navarro, thanks so much for your leadership on this, because you've been a clarion call for, for this for years. And just one point that has been made is that there's been a real improvement in that we're not over-formalizing the plants, and for instance, cutting down lantana into little bulbs, and we're letting it grow and be a healthier plant as a result. So thanks so much, there's been a real change in that. I know you're responsible for that, Sean. And I know you said there's a 65% of the landscape is commercial and residential. Do you have a breakdown beyond that for how much is commercial versus residential?
I can do the research for you and get that back.
That's okay, I just wondered if you knew off the top of your head. And I know you're not in charge of the commercial right-of-ways, obviously, but, and our, our code compliance is looking at commercial establishments to make sure that they are maintaining, and we're being very strict with our residents, so it's important that we look at businesses and make sure that they keep up with their landscaping plans, which they submitted to council and, and, you know, received approval based on that landscape plan. So I'm really glad that that's happening. I know it's not your bailiwick, but it's an important part of the picture. But thank you so much.
Thank you.
Sean, thank you very much. I think you heard it from the majority of us up here, all of us, about if you don't have enough staff, make sure you let us know that. And I just remind us, because it's a cold arpy to the fire when we go through our budget process too, so.
Thank you.
Tough choices, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Leach?
Mr. Mayor, at this time, we'd like to also have a presentation about the upcoming Tempe Town Lake 20th Anniversary Celebration.
It's been 20 years, how about that? Blink, and look at it. You've got water, you've got buildings.
Good evening, Mayor and council. I'm Chris Baxter King, and this is Most Slandered Republican Information Officers for the city. Thank you for your time tonight. We just wanted to talk to you a little bit about a fabulous opportunity that we have this year. Since 1999, Town Lake has been in existence, and we have been planning an amazing celebration for you and for the entire community. Not just two events that happened at the time, but a year-long focused campaign of information. So why are we celebrating Town Lake? It is a global example of ingenuity in Tempe. It is quintessential Tempe. It's an amazing place to go. It improves lives with this beautiful space. Where else can you go and do yoga on a paddleboard? It's this incredible recreation area, an incredible place to relax. It's an economic driver, it's state-of-the-art flood control, it's a place for wildlife to go. It's just an incredible place. And the future is bright at Tempe Town Lake. And it's getting brighter. We have a business celebration scheduled for you on Friday, November 8, that will have a presentation on the current and future opportunities of Town Lake. We're going to thank the people who helped us get there, people from Hayden Prairie Lakeside and ASU. And our Tempe 11 team has been working hard on a Town Lake Turns 20 video project, and we'll debut that video there. But at the party, there'll be live music, there'll be guided boat tours. We really want to utilize this opportunity to showcase everything we've done during the last 20 years, and look forward to the next 20. Okay, so Saturday, November 9, is the big community birthday party. It's from 11 to 4, and we are, last year, council approved the Rio's Lotto and Beach Park Master Plan. And what we wanted to do was activate the lake in alignment with the master plan. So what we've done is this. All of those zones that you see up there are pulled from the master plan, and we are doing all of the activities that you see there. So on the north end, that northwest end, that's kind of empty and no space and nothing going on, we're going to have a zip line, a rock wall, a pump track. In the athletics zone, we're going to bring out ASU to host a volleyball tournament. There's going to be some recreational activities going on throughout the entire lake. We're going to be bringing in our recreation team to do condensed versions of some of our rec classes that you could do outside on the grass. So you'll see a lot of that. At the marina, we're going to have stand-up paddleboarding, kayaking, the, the, well, all of our boating activities are going to be free for the public that day, again, in condensed versions. On the south side, the Arts and Eco Zone, the TCA will be open that day, the gallery will be open that day. We're going to have public art displays, we're going to have bird watching. Citizen Science is bringing out some NASA cloud-watching station. We're going to have tai chi on the grass. In Beach Park, which is the entertainment district, we've got banks that are scheduled to play, food trucks, a museum display. And then moving over to the east is the Riviera, which is kind of like the boardwalk. So we've got, we're working with ETA on a mini Sixth Street Market. State Farm is one of our sponsors, so they're going to have a significant presence in that area. We're going to do Zumba and have some more of the historical display in that area from the History Museum. And then that grassy area on the far east side that's kind of at a slant will be a nice open picnic area. This has been a tremendous collaboration with all of the city divisions and departments, and working together to come up with all these activities. We have several sponsors on board as well to help fund all. So we're, we're half-funded by sponsors. So this is the plan for that November 9 to celebrate. It's kind of the community birthday party. So basically, the year-long effort that we're going to have is starting really in October, when we start launching all the publicity for these particular events. We'll put out a monthly email blast, really short, just fun tidbits of information about the lake and how it benefits our entire community. Some fun facts like, did you know there are bald eagles at Tempe Town Lake? Old photos like the one that you see here. And then we'll have a traveling display of pull-up banners that'll go into our city facilities, as well as a lot of the businesses that are around the lake and in some of the apartment buildings. And it's, the lake is going to be layered into everything that we do for the next year. It's a great opportunity to talk about all the things that we've done. And by the way, out of all the things we have on that map, probably the most exciting for me personally is the launch of the Water Taxi. We've been talking about that since the lake started. The biggest part, I forgot about it. It is the most important thing. We're going to have the opportunity to take people to each one of those six zones in a boat, and kind of test-drive that Water Taxi. We have five boats that'll hit each of those stations about every eight minutes or so. Are there any questions?
That's great. Councilmember Navarro and Councilwoman Keating?
Thanks, Mayor, and, and thank you guys both for this presentation. And just to the last point, the Water Taxi, I think is such a big thing. You see the development going on on the north side of the lake with the residential and with the retail and the entertainment that's going to go on there, especially on the south side of the lake. It's going to be so neat to have the ability to travel back and forth for anybody who comes out to visit not only locally, but nationally and worldwide. I think it's a tremendous asset, and I just want to say, say thank you to you all both, and proud of what we've done and achieved in councils before us that got this, you know, project going. There's major kudos for that, because we're reaping the benefits, obviously, from what they've made, and the decisions they had to make, and the hard decisions they had to make at that time. So thank you, guys.
Vice Mayor Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to thank you for this. I think a year-long celebration is completely appropriate. I love what you've laid out. I'm excited for the Water Taxi. You know, the lake is so iconic, not only for our city, but for the region as a whole. So I'm so happy that we're going to take the time to really kind of celebrate and highlight all the value that it's brought to the city of Tempe. And, you know, Tempe is impossible to imagine without the lake, you know, and only 20 years ago, it wasn't here. It's kind of mind-blowing considering how much that area has developed. So I'm very pleased with it, and I'm excited to be part of that, and great work.
Obviously, it's great. And one thing I would ask is that you work with our Neighborhood Services Office, with Sean and Warner, and Elizabeth Thomas, to make sure that all this information gets out to all the neighborhoods. And it might be good to have this for game night, too. If you have some information, just, we just really want to have this great celebration. It's, it's a celebration by many, and it's an entire community celebration. So this is fantastic.
We did forget one thing. There is going to be a band on a boat, so. There's going to be a band on a boat for almost the entire celebration.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. A couple more announcements. We've had some recent recruitments and promotions I wanted to recognize. First, in our new Municipal Utilities Department, we just recently announced the hiring of Terry P. Cars, who's going to be the new director, will be starting mid-October. He currently works for the Central Arizona Project, worked in the water utility at the city of Phoenix for many years. We're excited to have Terry come aboard to the city of Tempe in the Municipal Utilities Director position. With us here tonight is Julian Driesang. I was recently promoted to City Engineer. Congratulations to Julian. We have in the back Billy Vickers, who has recently been announced as the interim president for UAEA, our Recognized Employee Bargaining Group for our line-level employees throughout the city of Tempe, all departments. Thank you, Billy, for stepping up into that role. Look forward to working with you. And last, a sad note, longtime city employee Gus Diamond, who worked in our Development Services Department, passed away this last weekend. I want to extend our condolences to his family on his passing. He was, like I said, a longtime employee here at the city of Tempe and will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. With that, we're going to move on to our consent agenda. All the items listed on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the City Council unless an item is removed for separate consideration. Members of the public may remove public hearing items for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk. And council members may remove any item for separate consideration. If you do wish to speak on an item that's a public hearing item, please fill out a speaker's card located in the back of the History Museum and please turn it into our city clerk where you have it. Here, we'll call your name and it's your turn to speak. Miscellaneous items 5A1 through 5A7, awards and bids and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B8, and resolutions, items 5C1 through 5C5. And again, I just want to say, if there's any agenda items that is marked with an asterisk, it is a public hearing item and it can be removed by a member of the public for separate consideration. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to have a public hearing item removed for separate consideration? I have one, 5A7. Which one?
5B4.
We have 5A7. And 5B4? Any others? Anyone? All right. Hearing none. Is there a motion with the consent agenda as read, with the exceptions of 5A7 and 5B4?
Moved.
Member Keating, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Chin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes. Item 5A7 is to hold a public hearing to recommend the approval of a acquisition of control series 6 liquor license for Lipson Creative LLC, DBA Varsity Tavern, 501 South Mill Avenue. Mr. Craig Miller?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Craig Miller. I work with the Arizona Liquor Industry Consultants. We do the paperwork filing for applications and ensure that the paperwork and licenses are up to date and correct. The owners of this establishment are out of town right now. They're doing a management trip with some of their managers, one owner left in town. And because they got rid of a manager recently, he's at the establishment tonight because they don't want to leave it without an owner or a manager. This is an acquisition. There was three main partners in it, a gentleman that started working for them. Sorry. They gave him some sweat equity and added him on there as a member of the ownership.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve item 5A7?
Moved.
By Councilmember Navarro, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Chin. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion does pass 7 to 0. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is item 5B4, which is awarded two-year contract for Archaeological Consulting Services Limited for the preparation of Historic Property Survey and Inventory and Historic Preservation Plan. Councilmember Vice Mayor Keating?
Yes, I pulled this one. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted, it's a moment in time to really take note because the last time we did a historic inventory, property survey and inventory and historic preservation plan was 1983. So it's been 36 years. And this is a long-needed infusion of funds and a two, possibly up to a two-year project to really assess our historic properties and to our prehistoric treasures as well. And this would not have happened without a number of groups, Historic Preservation Commission, Historic Preservation Foundation, and John Southard, who is our Historic Preservation Officer. Is John here? Is he in the room? I haven't seen him. I've been scouring the audience, but don't see him. John is such a passionate and knowledgeable advocate of historic properties and preservation and is really seen that way in the state and in the valley. So thank you so much. But I also, it would be amiss, not to point out, our deputy city manager, Stephen Methbin, who really made this happen, who looked and found money in the budget in the last budget year. We approved this in July. So after 36 years, we're going to have a refined and updated Historic Property Survey and Inventory. And thank you so much for making that happen. Thank you. I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion does pass 7 to 0. All right. Okay. Next item on the agenda, if I could indulge the council, I'd like to move one item up, if that's okay. It is going to be... It's a second hearing. Where is it? Oh, item 6C1, if that's okay with the council? All right. We're going to take this out of order, if that's okay. We're going to go to item 6C1, is to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance for a planned area development overlay for the development plan review for a new four-story commercial development consisting of approximately 191 square feet of office, retail, restaurant for First and Farmer, located at 206 South Farmer Avenue. The applicant is Sender and Associates. This is a public hearing item. Would the applicant like to make a statement?
Excuse me, Mayor. Darren Sender, Sender Associates, representing Wexford Development. Thank you so much for taking this project. We are very, very proud of the project and how it's been designed. John Kane, Architect Gordon with Wexford, really taken a step outside the norm here and to create something very unusual and, as you mentioned at the first hearing, iconic in the community. And we would like to maintain that energy moving forward. So we truly appreciate all of your positive comments at the last hearing and hopefully we can bring more of these types of projects to the community. So thank you very much.
You're going to, as you showed, is there a way, you have anything to show, just the quick rendering?
I just thought, since there are many members of the public here tonight, it might be good for them to, and many who are living in that neighborhood, might want to see it.
Sure. This is located on the north side, North Farmer Avenue, just off of First Street, adjacent to the APS facility, across the street from the yard. Actually, my office and John Kane's office is just south of this, a couple, a few hundred feet. And this is, the elevation looking, I believe this is looking south down Farmer. The project includes biophilic architecture, which includes plantings on the exterior, deep recesses to shade the building, and also a self-shading structure on the outside, which creates a deep reveal that shade the building by itself. So the heat gain in the summertime and even in the warmer winter days, it doesn't get as hot inside as typical. The materials are also native plants, which are low water use. This is similar to optima, however, the planting is, are different. The landscape architect did an amazing job of including plantings here that don't require water all day long. They also included low-water usage plantings on all sides of the building and also created deep shade reveals to create more shade and shadow for pedestrians along Farmer Avenue. A deep and very, very activated Farmer Avenue. So we're very excited about that because, again, my office is right down the street. We walk, we take walks here a lot along Farmer. And people who are parking in the neighborhood and parking in the area and live in the neighborhood can walk up and down the street and have a lot of shade and a very cool building. And it is an office building. It's not residential.
Thank you. Thank you, Miss Sender.
Thank you.
With that, is there any other comments? This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this on this item? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. Any comments?
Second.
Mr. Moved by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes 7 to 0. Thank you. Next, we're going to go back to our non-consent agenda. All the items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. Next section is miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, resolutions. The first item under this section is 6A1. It is a non-public hearing. It's a quasi-judicial hearing. It's the appeal of the Development Review Commission decision to deny a development plan review for a new three-story, 10-lot, single-family development for Farmer Goodwin Townhomes, located at 830 South Farmer Avenue. This item that is on the agenda tonight is an appeal from the Development Review Commission, otherwise known as the DRC. The decision on August 26, 2019, was to deny the development plan review, the DPR, for the proposed development on the site, including a site plan, building elevations, and landscape plan. The zoning and development code does not provide for a presentation to be given by either party or for public input on this item. Is there any comments or discussion from the council members on this item? Councilmember Keating?
Prime Mayor, do we have a presentation from?
Yep. No presentation. Okay.
We could. The council would like to have a presentation?
I was just asking.
We have the background.
Okay, Mayor. I move we deny the appeal and uphold the DRC decision to deny the DPR.
I second it.
Okay. There's been a motion by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Adams. Any other discussion? Vice Mayor?
I just want to say that this is a quasi-judicial item. So we're ordered not to look at actually how it impacts the character of the neighborhood or other issues. We're supposed to look at due process, whether there was impartiality or bias. And it was a question about the drawing, and then there was a question about the Prop 207, 207 denial of rights. And when I looked at those four items that you brought up, I just did not find that the arguments held water. It did not seem to rise to the evidentiary requirements that we have in this quasi-judicial proceeding. And so that's why I am going to vote to deny the appeal.
Any other comments from the council? There's been a motion, there's a second. All those in favor of denying the appeal to uphold the DRC's decision, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes 7 to 0. Next item is item 6A2, is awarded a construction contract to AZ Western Contracting Incorporated for the Real Salado Shared Use Path at McClintock Drive Underpass, project located at 11 South McClintock Drive. Are there any comments or discussion from the council on item 6A2? Is there a motion on item 6A2?
Moved.
By Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Arredondo Savage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes 7 to 0. The next item under this section is item 6A3. Is awarded construction manager at risk construction contract for Archer Gardner Construction LLC, sewer capacity improvements at 21st Street from Hardy to Wilson Street project. Is any comments or discussion in the council on item 6A3?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes 7 to 0. The next item under this section is item 6A4, is awarded job order construction contracts to PEX Construction Company, MGC Contractors Incorporated, and PCL Construction Incorporated to perform the minor treatment, plant, field site improvements. Is there any comments or discussion or a motion on item 6A4? It's moved by Vice Mayor Keating, seconded by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion does pass. The next item in this section is awarded job order construction contracts to Archer Gardner Construction LLC, FPS Civil LLC, and the PCL Construction Incorporated to perform the underground utility construction and water wastewater improvements. Any comments or discussion or a motion on item 6A5? It's moved by Vice Mayor Keating, seconded by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does pass 7 to 0. Last item under this section is item 6A6, to adopt a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the regional public transportation authority for the purchase and supply of transit services for fiscal year 2019-20. Is any comments or discussion or a motion on item 6A6? It's moved by Councilmember Adams. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Navarro. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion does pass. Next item, section, is our non-consent agenda, is ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be heard but will not be voted on this evening. The second hearing and final vote for these items is scheduled for October 17, 2019. So the ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing, the first item under this section is item 6B1, is to introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance approving a development agreement for developer-owned real property located at 979 East Playa del Norte and authorizing the mayor to execute a development agreement for one or more deeds, leases, emulated documents with 979 Playa del Norte LLC to effect such transaction. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for October 17. Is there, this is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this on this item? Could you get my attention? Seeing none. I'll close the public hearing portion. Any comments or discussion from the council on item 6B1? Seeing none. Go on to the next item. It's item 6B2, is to hold a first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the abandonment of a 30-foot storm drain easement located at 660 West Baseline Road, near the northeast corner of Baseline Road and Roosevelt Street. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for October 17, 2019. Is, this is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this on this item? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. Any comments or discussion from the council on item 6B2? Seeing none. Next item on this section is item 6B3, is to introduce, hold, and first public hearing adopt the resolution for the Urban Core Master Plan, a policy-based plan and a design guidelines for the Urban Core Master Plan and the TOD, located within the area, generally located or bounded by Hardy Drive to the west, Union Pacific Road to the south, Loop 101, and City Limits to the east, and Loop 202 to the north. The applicant is the City of Tempe. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for October 17, 2019. This is a public hearing item, and I have some cards. And I will call you in the order I receive them. This is 6B3. Mr. Brown, Tom Brown?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tom Brown, I live in the 852, 85284 district down on Homestead Lane. There are three related issues on your agenda, 6B3, 4, and 5. Just let me explain. 6B3 and 5 are the Urban Core Master Plan and the Urban Code District. And these may be the best tools ever, or they could be a problem if they're strictly used as a mathematical methodology for increased density and height. So I'm concerned about how they're applied. If they're applied without careful design, which reflects the surroundings, I think it could be a chance, a missed opportunity to, in fact, protect our city's qualities. The staff has done a great job. If Embika is here, I want to thank Embika and SHAD. It's really a great document that was prepared. There's a lot of work, I think about two years' worth. Everyone involved wants higher-quality projects in Tempe, which express our shared values, not just more and more. There are some exceptions. We certainly work for developers and builders, and we respect the profit margin. That's part of our system. We are not anti-growth. When I say "we," I'm talking about the people on the DRC and the design community collectively. We are not anti-growth. We really are pro-quality, and we want to be sure that that's what takes place here. I ask that you please amend the item 6B, I'm sorry, that you act on the amendment to the general plan, which is item 6B4. I understand it's an annual deadline. I believe it's October. And that is a once-a-year opportunity. I understand that that needs to move forward. But I'm going to ask politely that you maybe hold off on the Urban Code and the Urban Core Master Plan just until some bonus aspects are understood and perhaps balanced. It may allow for some additional heights and density calculations if a project takes exceptional efforts to design projects with better environmental or social qualities, such as workforce housing and photometrics and so forth, or photovoltaics. Tempe will not stop growing if this does not move forward immediately, at least until the next downturn. There will be, there's no need to rush the process. We are seeing a huge amount of square footage come online. And if it's not absorbed by the marketplace, that will correct, the marketplace will correct that. That, that, that occurred. The marketplace will correct that occurrence. I'm more concerned about the future 10 and 20 and 30 years out, our grandchildren's time. I do want to also ask that you continue to let downtown be the focal point for height and density, because I believe if we extend it along the light rail and you have the higher, higher-density classifications, that we will lose some of the energy and the focus on downtown. A few moments ago, the council members talked about things that are appealing about Tempe, specifically the landscape aspects of the streetscape, and that's along the same lines of what I'm talking about. We want to ensure that Tempe is known for being a visual city with good quality. And someone else also mentioned that we have one shot at doing, doing this sort of thing. We are, we are, we need to be careful that we don't create situations where we're a whole generation of brutal buildings that don't address the streetscape and allow for public, public space. So I want to thank you, and I look forward to your discussions and hopefully thoughtful management of change.
And with that, I'm going to actually read 6B4 and 6B5, so those I have the cards with, because some have just put 6B3, then some put 6B4 and 6B5. So I'm going to read the other two items for public comment, if that's okay with everybody.
Yeah.
Okay. So Item 6B4 is introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt a resolution authorizing a major amendment to the general plan 2040, including a projected land use map amendment from various land use categories to mixed use and new mixed use industrial category with the general plan text amendments and the projected residential density map amendment from various density categories on approximately 854 acres for the Urban Core Master Plan and the TOD located within the area generally bounded by Hardy Drive to the west, Union Pacific Railroad to the south, Loop 101, and City Limits to the east, and Loop 202 to the north. The applicant is the city of Tempe, and the second and final public hearing is scheduled for October 17. This is, we're all going to have a chance. And the next one is Item 6B5. It's to introduce and hold the first public hearing and adopt an ordinance for a zoning map amendment and code text amendment to the Tempe Zoning and Development Code for a new urban code district with specific zones designated in certain areas on approximately 947 acres for the Urban Core Master Plan and the TOD located within the area generally bounded by Hardy Drive to the west, Union Pacific Railroad to the south, Loop 101, and City Limits to the east, and Loop 202 to the north. The applicant is the city of Tempe. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for October 17, 2019. And I did that because all these are related. So anyone that I have the cards, I'm going to call them the way I receive them for public comment for Item 6B3, 6B4, and 6B5. Okay? So, next one is Phil Amorosi.
Phil Amorosi, 1432 East Cedar Street. I really wanted to comment on 6B5. I want to say that I agree with the Urban Code Master Plan as a policy. It needs to be updated, and I think Ambika and Robbie have done a great job putting that together over the last two years, that we need to do this update to keep up with our growth. But what I'm worried about is the Urban Code District, the UCD, because that's where the rubber meets the road. That's where the development lawyers and the developers, that's what they look at when they want to make their buildings. And I found numerous inconsistencies and conflicts between that and the policy, and they were all addressed by the staff, so I was happy about that. But I can't imagine what people that get paid for a living that do this, what they're going to find. And I want to make sure that the city separates these. If you want to approve the policy, fine, but for the Urban Code District, you need to go over this with a fine-tooth comb. You need to look over and talk to other development lawyers and see where there are some problems and work that out before you pass it. And also, we haven't seen this bonus plan yet. That needs to be properly vetted by the whole community. It shouldn't just be rushed through. We don't know what it's all about yet, and yet you're having a second approval meeting on October 17. I think it's going to take a lot longer in the process to go through this whole thing and the bonus plan and see that it's equitable to everybody in the community that lives here. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. With that, the next speaker is Sam Sprague.
Good evening. My name is Sam Sprague, 33 East Pearson, Phoenix. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I am here to discuss the upcoming decisions you're going to be making, passing this along, specifically Item 6B5. I have some prepared remarks, if you don't mind. Development Orbis is working with the property owners at the northwest corner of Apache and McClintock to determine an appropriate program for the future development of that site. It will be compatible with the new Urban Core Master Plan as well as the Urban Code District. And as you know, at this time, that's been a moving target because it's been changing, evolving, and so we've been following it and proceeding as best we can with the idea that, once it's adopted, we will then be able to move forward. So while Orbis, my company, and the property owners are supportive of the goals stated in the Urban Core Master Plan, there are a number of challenges with the development standards that are outlined in the UCD ordinance from a development perspective. The most notable of these, the only two I really want to discuss tonight, have to do with the maximum number of parking spaces that are being considered within the different districts, as well as the requirements for parking structures, which would come into play if certain maximum number of parking spaces were exceeded. So I'll try to keep this as simple as I can. Essentially, at this time, the ordinance is considering a maximum number of parking spaces of 0.65 space per bed. So that's less than one space per bedroom. And in the event that you exceed those, that number of spaces, or you need to have additional parking spaces, then additional requirements kick in, which increase the cost and the complications associated with engineering a parking structure to provide additional parking. The additional, the alternative is to basically develop your parking underground, which I think is terrific, is desirable. It's also so expensive that most of the projects that you've seen before you in the last couple of years, as well as all of those that have been coming forward now, even up along the town lake and in the, and in the city center, have been forced to go above ground, and that's one of the reasons why. It's because of the cost. So with that in mind, there are, there are a number of issues concerning the additional standards that they would like to impose on parking structures. Current estimates received in the last 30 days from a construction company that specializes in parking structures indicate that these requirements will increase the cost to a level that's two to two-and-a-half times more than that of a traditional parking structure. So with that in mind, the urban code is currently written. It might not be able to ensure adequate parking, provided it uses this one-size-fits-all standard for all the future projects that will be located within the urban core. The future development at Apache and McClintock will have different needs than a site located at, let's say, 7th Street and Mill, which I believe is a project that you'll be hearing more about later tonight. So with that in mind, we would hope that the final document will be able to take into consideration that not all properties in the urban core are created equal, and that a site, for instance, at the northwest corner of Apache and McClintock, may need substantially more parking than a site in the city center, and it should not be penalized because of that.
Thank you.
Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Stu Seifer.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Stu Seifer. I've had an architectural practice on Mill Avenue since the early 70s and have been involved in quite a few historic preservation projects. Presently involved with the, I've been on the Tempe Historic Preservation Commission and currently on the Tempe Preservation Foundation. Back in June, we decided that we should take a look at the Urban Core Master Plan with respect to its impact on historic preservation. We studied it, we did a report, we had a number of meetings with the staff on this, and we were fairly happy with what came out of it so far. They agreed to include a section of Mill Avenue, and our focus is specifically on Mill, not, not other aspects of it, that they are now referring to on the maps as the Historic Core. This runs from 4th Street to 6th Street. And they, they've also included in the back of the report, and this is in the master plan, not, not the, the UCD. They've included guidelines for development. That's all good. In fact, over the years, the main thrust of redevelopment on Mill Avenue has been to basically create a strong sense of place. As you all know, Mill Avenue is, is kind of the jewel of Tempe, and it's, it's won many awards for the fact that it's been developed in sympathy with the historic preservation buildings. In fact, it's been listed under the Great Places in America by the American Planning Association back in 2008, plus a number of other awards. Now, here's the problem. While both the Urban Core Master Plan and the Code District say nice things about historic preservation, there's very little in terms of specifics that are in there, and the UCD is the document, as the gentleman just said, where the rubber hits the road. That's, that's where the regulations are. And all the nice things that were said in the Urban Core Master Plan have not really transferred. There's, there's a passing reference to the Historic Core, but there's nothing in there that would require height restrictions. That's what we're concerned about. The Core Master Plan allows 90-foot-high buildings along the entire length of Mill Avenue, including the master, the Historic Core. And if you could imagine, 90-foot-high buildings in a district that has one, two, and three-story buildings, the tallest of which is probably about 45 feet, we feel that that's going to completely overwhelm the scale of the kind of old-town, Main Street feel that we have down there. So we would like to make four different recommendations, and I have them in more specific detail that I can pass forward to you. But first of all, we feel that the frontage heights of buildings on Mill Avenue for any new building should be no higher than 50 feet, hopefully less. 50 feet is what has been in the zoning ordinance for, for years, up until the TOD came on, and it's also happens to be the height of the historic buildings. Second, if 90-foot heights are required by law, say, as a result of Prop 207, then if they are going to be built in this district, they need to be stepped back as much as possible. The recommendation of the, of the planners has been to step them back 20 feet. That's nice. We don't think that's enough. We think they should be 34, maybe even 40 feet. In other words, a building that's 55 feet high, if they want to go to 90 feet, they have to go back at least 40 or 50 feet off of Mill Avenue before they can, they can step up. Finally, or not finally, but the other issue is that developers can obtain greater heights by opting in, and if they do that, they need to insist on preserving the historic buildings. And finally, they, we need to make sure that all these regulations in the master plan pass on to the urban core. So anyhow, I just want to conclude by saying that with the land shortage on Mill Avenue, there's tremendous development pressure to tear down and build over what is left of Tempe's architectural heritage, and you have an opportunity now to take a stand and keep this from happening and keep history alive on Mill Avenue.
Thank you, Stu. Next is Kevin Brown.
Kevin Brown, resident of Tempe. I don't have a lot to add to what has already been said, but my feelings are that I know you need to pass 6B4, I think, by next month, or you have to wait a year, and that's fine. But I would really like to see the bonus program codified before you pass the other two ordinances, and that's really all I have. Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Kevin. Mr. Brown. Vice Mayor Cubey?
Can I ask a question, Chad? Mr. Weaver? Could we talk about that deadline? Because I know, I just would like to clarify, because from my understanding, it doesn't necessarily, the general plan amendment doesn't necessarily have to pass in October just to be, have the opportunity to pass and be introduced. So are we held to the October 17 deadline for passing the, the 6B4?
Mayor, council, Chad Weaver, Community Development. No, we have consulted with our city attorney's office, and they, we are all in agreement that as long as we proceed to October and have all of these items at that meeting, we can elect them to approve or delay any of those. So we have, we have options at this point, certainly.
Great. Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that.
Great point.
Thank you.
This is a working document. Next, Ms. Zajak, Deborah.
Hello, I'm Deborah Zajak. I live on McAllister in North Tempe, and I don't know if I'm going to say much different, because I've been up here the last couple meetings saying the same thing and at all the DRC meetings about that. And my concern is the, the general plan amendment with the Urban Core Master Plan, that doesn't bother me at all, because we all know that the general plan, it's just advisory, there's no teeth in it. The teeth come in the Urban Code District, and I would really like to see more clarification on the, the bonus program, so that if we go above, like when they say the 90-feet height, we also know that in the, the general plan, it's going to be much higher than that, and we will push toward that. So I'd like to see that kind of just stiffened up before we, because I'd like to see the residents of Tempe get what they deserve and not so much given away. So thank you.
Thank you. Next, Trevor Barger.
Mayor, council members, thank you for the opportunity tonight. As you know, I live in downtown, have for 20 years, love it because it's urban and it's dense, and I love being in that sort of setting. We've worked with staff for over a year on the documents before you, and the general plan amendment, we believe, is ready to move forward. Robie and the rest of the staff did some great elements of trying to clarify some points for us, add some notes to the maps, and clean up the details in the mapping, and so we believe that's, that's ready to go, and would recommend you approve it. The Urban Core Master Plan, I think we have two requests on that one. One is to allow taller residential and office buildings within mixed-use developments in Area 8 in the downtown. The second is to remove or rework Section 1.13, Building Form and Taller Buildings on Page 65, to allow the type of high-rises that we already have in downtown Tempe. We have some beautiful, award-winning examples of architecture in downtown Tempe now, State Farm, Mirabella soon to complete, that the current guidelines would not permit any longer in that setting. With those two changes, we think the Urban Core Master Plan is ready to move forward for approval. Much like you've heard from most folks this evening, Phil and others, the UCD is where it still needs a lot of work. Staff has been taking on a Herculean effort in this area, but it is a Herculean effort, and because it's law, not guidelines, then each of the words matters. And as you've heard already tonight, parking, the bonus program are still important key elements that need working there. And in our downtown now, I mean, I live in what was the historic downtown, really. Novus has been added to that, and it's under construction, and will greatly expand our downtown, and really, it now goes all the way over to Cornerstone, and those properties right along rural at University. And so with that, we ask that the UC1 designation that is applied currently just in downtown be applied to those properties at that corner, as those standards already exist.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Adams?
Yes, could you explain a little bit more about the UCMB plan that you said, like the other buildings, like, are already bigger than what's proposed? Can you just explain that a little bit better, Trevor?
Mayor, Councilmember Adams? Absolutely. So in downtowns, when you get above a certain height, often we like space around towers. In downtown, so far, without any guidelines in place, we've typically had 70 feet around our towers, and our point towers have gone up. And point towers is one of the words for saying high-rise, the kind of the skinny portion, because we know they have a big base to them. When we look at those skinny portions, then, many jurisdictions have a hard time describing how do you limit the size of the floor, the floorplant plate as you go up, and how do you limit the size of the length of buildings? It's a very challenging one. The most limiting are the ones right on Central Park. The most limiting are the ones right on Central Park in New York, and they are multimillion-dollar condos, and they go right up in a skinny little pencil tower, is what the New Yorkers call them, along the park. Beautiful views, great setting, incredibly expensive construction. Typically, in our setting, anything that is an office building setting is a, about 120-foot depth to a building and about 300 feet long. That's what we see in the Idea Campus, that's what we see even larger than that at State Farm, where we have buildings that are 43,000-square-foot footprints with 295-foot-long dimensions to them. The same, because of, in our climate, wanting to have north-south-facing buildings and very skinny east-west facing, then our towers tend to line up so that they are east-west buildings facing north and south. And doing that, the Opus Residential Tower on 7th Street, for example, has a 21,000-square-foot footprint, smaller because it's residential, office has a bigger footprint, and it has a 360-foot maximum length to that tower. And so I think we have great examples that we should allow to continue in the future, and that our guidelines can easily reflect that.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Wendy Riddell.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, Wendy Riddell. I will tell you, when I came in this evening and saw the Comfort Companion Animal, I actually assumed he was here for this agenda item, having sat through all the last hearings. So I will tell you, it's, it's a very laudable goal that the city has taken on here, that staff has taken on here, and it's a great opportunity for Tempe. And we have been working very, very hard. I think as we stand here today, talking to all of our clients, our development clients, we're comfortable with the general plan, where that stands. Subject to what you heard from Trevor, we're generally comfortable with the policy document that's in front of you. What we just can't quite get comfortable with is the regulation. And it really does come down to the fact that the density bonus program has not been presented. It's hard to go to my developer clients and say, you have 90 feet with this, you may get 150 feet, but I can't tell you how you get from here to there. But don't worry, it's coming. It's just, I can't sell it. I've tried. And frankly, if I were here on their behalf, trying to sell that to you folks, I think you would tell me, nice try, get out of here. So I think where we are today, again, comfortable with the general plan amendment, comfortable with the policy document, I think the regulatory piece needs a little more work, and it needs the development of the density bonus program. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Next is Eduardo Yates, and I need to remind the speakers, if you please state your place of residence for the record as well. Eduardo?
You know, I have a great deal of trouble dealing with the city, and I wish that you could tell me what you have. I have, I have a number of concerns about the plan, especially about the density in residential areas. I feel that this will, the developers and their lawyers are going to be the big winners here, because what will happen, what has already happened in Riverside, is that houses are being knocked down and big apartments put in their place. And I think this plan will encourage a lot more of that, so that people who have, in these older neighborhoods that they're enjoying, they, they, they should be protected, those neighborhoods should be protected and preserved. And this plan kind of encourages developers to buy up those houses, not, knock them down and build big apartment buildings. And those will not be affordable for many, many people. I, I don't know whether you've heard of U-Mom, any of you. U-Mom is a program that's sponsored by the Methodist Church, and they have many programs for, for homeless people. They help them find, find housing, they help them do all kinds of things to encourage them. But I have found out that only, there's only 20 units to find for these people of 100 people who want those units. Another disturbing factor is that last year, in Maricopa County alone, there were 40,000 evictions. This is very troubling, and I know that Lauren has been concerned about all those things, and you've tried to, you've tried to put some things in to have developers give them incentives to, to build some more affordable housing, more workforce housing. But it's just, I think it's like what I found out about the people in U-Mom that try to find housing for people. There, that might help a few, a few people, but many more will be, lose their, the housing that they have, not afford the more expensive housing that will come. Thank you.
Your order. Next is Lucas Cabrera.
I'm sorry.
I said, thank you. Next is Lucas Cabrera.
Yeah.
Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
I'm going to have my wife stand with me, because I can talk, can't hear.
Okay.
Okay? My name is Lucas Cabrera, and we are residents of the Victory Acres neighborhood, which, if you don't know where that is, we are the eastern section of Tempe, from Apache to University. And I'm here to discuss the future of our neighborhood. I've noticed, and many residents in my neighborhood have noticed, what this city government has done to Apache and all these high-rises and all of these buildings along Apache, starting from ASU coming this way and then going that way. We, in Victory Acres, we don't want that in our neighborhood. I looked at the maps, I went to a meeting, and I saw where there is a high-density projection in the urban code district for our neighborhood, and it intrudes into the neighborhood. So once I looked at this, showed this to our neighbors, and they go, well, this, maybe you can say something at their city council. You know, what, I'm going to ask you a question, and more a rhetorical question, but what are, what are the resources that we have? So when it comes time in the future, when you have plans to put some kind of buildings like this in our neighborhood, what recourse do we have? I think the only recourse that we have is to speak up now. We do not want these high-rise buildings that we've seen on Apache in our neighborhood. It's as clear as that. I'm not the only one, we're the only ones here, I think, from the meetings that we've had, but there's many, many residents like myself that want me to make this very, very clear to you. I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, next, Ms. Drew Sullivan.
66.
Oh, sorry. Thank you. That's all the cards I have. Is there anyone else who would want to discuss items 6B3, 6B4, and 6B5? Ms. Gitlis?
Good evening, mayor and council members. Karen Gitlis, and I live in the downtown area, and I'll be, will be directly affected by the development that's sure to come. I have many issues with these documents and this process. At this point in time, my concern is that the urban core district and zoning changes are not ready, the urban code district, excuse me, especially, on that, the zoning changes are not ready to go through the process for approval by council. I understand that minimally you needed to make the October public hearing deadline to be ready to vote on the amendments based on the requirements of state law. The deadline has been met, and now I believe we need to slow down and continue to vet the documents for accuracy, consistency, and also the changes to the historic preservation component of the document that was added at the 11th hour. Mr. Weaver continues to insist that changes will be made up to the day the document goes to council. His assertions have created a sense of urgency that is inappropriate, I believe, given the magnitude of what is being proposed by this department. Mr. Weaver's rush to approve, rush to, to approve, along with comments he has made in several meetings, lead me to question his commitment to getting these documents into spot-on accuracy, consistency, and appropriateness. And we don't even have them all at this point. The bonus point program has been alluded to several times here. The overarching issue that I have is that these documents and the process, if approved, will abrogate the vote in which the citizens of this city approved our general plan, General Plan 2040. This document, along with the zoning and development code, guides and limits what gets built in Tempe. Overriding the constraints of the general plan is what we have commissions and city councils for. This type of emendation of the general plan is generally done by making decisions, a project at a time. To my knowledge, the city has never made major amendment changes that reach the scope, this scope so drastically allowable zoning in multiple location, zoning changes in multiple locations. A change throughout downtown of 50 feet to 90 feet allowable height is way too much of a giveaway to development interests. And the plan for the development staff to award these entitlements is very disturbing. They would be, they would be awarding points based on whatever this bonus program turns out to be. That's my understanding. It's a case of the fox guarding the hen house. An award of this level of entitlement should continue to be the purview of the city council. The general plan process is the appropriate venue to discuss over an extended period of time, all of the elements that need to be considered. We need the discussion of these major changes to zoning in, in context with all the other elements that will go into putting together a general plan. Please do the right thing. Residents need to participate in this, and we have not had appropriate or near enough participation. We have not, I mean, the decisions have been made by the gang from LA. The hired corporate nabobs are not the ones to be making these plans. It should be your, your citizenry. I think the urban code districts, zoning changes, and the amendments to the general plan should be rejected by the mayor and council. I want to thank Lucas for his comments. I appreciate them, and I'm concerned that there are so people speaking to this issue here today, tonight. I think that your citizenry has a lack of understanding of what you are about to put in motion, and I am very concerned about that. So at the minimum, please delay this program. I would like to see these changes happen, though, under the general plan process. That takes a year and is citizens' input. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak to us under public comments for items 6B3, 6B4, and 6B5? Could you please get my attention? Yes, please come forward. Please state your name, place of, oh, residence for the record. Phil, you just had a card, but I thought you was under unscheduled public.
I'm very sorry for that. For the record, I'm Philip Yates, and I'm the president for the Riverside Neighborhood Well, I've got to say, first and foremost, that this is the worst thing I've ever seen presented to the city council while I've been doing this. I have never seen anything quite this bad. And it is really tragic irony that we are here in this room, right next to some of the best presentations of our history. We really need to think before we act, and we haven't thought enough about this. We need more time to do this in a serious manner. We need more time to think about what kind of impact this would have on our city. This is really tragic. One said that this could have been a Herculean effort. It's taken two years to get us where we are here today. If this has truly been a Herculean effort, then the city has a lot to learn about what we are dedicated to in our city. We need a heck of a lot more time to figure out exactly what it is that the people that live in these neighborhoods actually want and approve and do for now, and do for the everlasting existence of this city. I never really wanted to bring the fact into matter that I am a fifth-generation Tempean. I have an eight-year-old that is a sixth-generation Tempean. My aunt brought the oldest brick house from ASU to where it is now, which is right next to where I sit and live, and have every single intention of living for the rest of my life. And my son has said the same thing. He loves it here. And just looking at this is just horrible. It's a horrific thing to be presented to all of you. We need a heck of a lot more time to be present from everybody. We need to know exactly what it is that is going to happen as a result of this kind of a change to a beautiful city. This is a crucial time for everybody standing and sitting in front of me to make a stand and say to everybody that, no, you're going to need some more time to do this right, because this is not right by any means. I think that everybody knows that they'd love going down to Mill Avenue and, and spending time in all of the old buildings. We just lost one of the best Mexican food, no, the best Mexican food restaurants that the city of Tempe has ever had, Restaurant Mexico, on the east side of Mill Avenue. Mill Avenue has been proposed, and this proposal to be 90 feet high, seriously? That's an outrage. Somebody told me that it was $8,000 a month to lease something on Mill Avenue, and that was the Mexican food restaurant, Restaurant Mexico. That's sad. That is really sad. We need more time to say to everybody that lives in these neighborhoods, people that have been their entire life for, living in the lower-class neighborhoods, lower-class neighborhoods, lower-income neighborhoods, already existing. This would change all of that forever, forever. Five generations, I have had so many stories told to me by my family about how it has been to live in this city. Yes?
Thank you, Phil. Time's up. Thank you. Thank you. Vice Mayor Kirby?
I just want to say, Phil, I mean, I, I listen to your comments, and you are here almost every meeting, and I so value your contribution, but when I hear you say that this is horrific and the worst thing, that, uh, something bridles in me, because I think about what's motivating this whole urban core master plan. And I know at least for me, and maybe I can't speak for the council, but I know for me, it's, it's wanting to see more affordable and workforce housing in the downtown core. It's wanting people, it's wanting our nurses, our teachers, our firefighters, our students, people to be able to afford to live downtown. And I also, as somebody who has a public history background, I want to see historic protections that are just not there now. And, and I agree, there needs to be work done with all of these elements to ensure that there is protection for historic properties. But one of the motivations driving this is to integrate our historic inventory and our knowledge of historic places in Tempe and protect them more, because right now we don't have those protections. We don't. And I've been at the, in this council, and we've had developers come to us, and we say, why aren't we getting affordable housing? And they say, you can't make me, because we know about, you know, inclusionary zoning is, is illegal in Arizona. It's a very popular tool with cities across the country. So we instructed staff years ago, two years ago, like, find tools that we can use to spark affordable and workforce housing. And I'm not, not saying that I'm happy with the plan as is. I'm going to make some suggestions and changes, and I'm not entirely sure how I'm going to vote. I have to tell you, there needs to be a lot more done, and we need to see what these bonus programs are about. But I, I just want to take a step back and, as a community, realize the reason we're here is, and maybe, don't let me speak for everybody, but I know that this council considers affordable housing to be a crisis in our city, and we want to see more affordable housing, and we need tools. As a city, we need tools, and that, that's why incentives are talked about. That's why relief of fees are talked about. Um, we can't require developers to, to build affordable workforce housing. So I would just ask, pardon? Because the state of Arizona has decided that inclusionary zoning, which is, is zoning that allows a council to say, we like your plan, but we want 10% workforce or 10% affordable, and unless you do that, we're not going to support you. If we do that, it's illegal. We have our state's share of revenue taken away. You're not asking for affordable and workforce housing? Right.
Either he comes up here.
Yeah, if you want to come up here, that's fine.
You have to use a microphone.
Yeah, it's better. Sorry.
And Vice Mayor is responding to your comment, so if you could stay right here.
But I would like to ask you, what tools should we use, given the restrictions? And, and I'm the last person to say that restrictions that the state does should hamper us or stop us. We have to strive and use everything, every tool in our toolbox, like the Affordable Housing Impact Statement that we've already passed. But what, what tools would you suggest that we could use, short of?
Think a lot more. We definitely have to think a lot more about it. You're right. Uh, we don't have the right tools, so maybe we should have different kinds of tools. The City of Tempe needs to think about that, because it is the tools that are going to make the changes happen. It is the tools that are going to enable developers to do what it is that they like to do, which is stuff money in their own pockets, and that's it. That's the only reason they're doing all of this. That's all.
Thank you.
All right. That's all the, the public comment cards I have. Is anyone else? Yes, please come forward, state your name and place of residence for the record.
Alana Billingsley. I live on 10th and Farmer at 1008 South Farmer Avenue. And I have concerns about the density in our residential areas currently, and probably for about the last five years, I've been living in a construction war zone, whether it be unsafe traffic conditions, whether it be noise from construction, the beeping of cars, uh, and also the cranes in our skyline that are polluting our skyline.
Alana, I need to, we're referencing item 63, I mean, 6B3, 6B4, and 6B5, so you have to relate it to these.
Yes, and.
And I have you down at, at, for public comment, too, because you didn't state what you were going to speak on.
Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. I'm distracted by the time.
I mean, it just needs to be on the items that we are discussing right now, 6B3.
This is about the Tempe zoning for the urban core and the urban, uh, code. Currently, I live right in the middle of the downtown area where we are allowing all of these high-rises to go up. And, you know, W6 is a great example of one that has failed. We all thought that bring more density in, more people are going to come, and it sits with so many vacancies, and Airbnbs are being developed out of these. And approving these kinds of drastic measures in our city is not going to make a good quality of life. You know, there was a comment that the State Farm building is beautiful. Well, when I think of the beauty of Tempe, I think of the beautiful sunsets that I won't be able to see anymore through these giant 90-foot-tall buildings. I think of the beautiful cacti that are going to not be there anymore, because there's buildings in its way. This plan doesn't serve the people who are already here. And so I'd like to bring that concern up, that as a resident, these cranes in the sky are just reminders that my quality of life doesn't matter as much. So I'd just like to get it on the record that, as a resident in the downtown area, these tall buildings, these things, they're not going to make our lives better. They're not going to make it more affordable for us, and we've already seen that happening. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's all the cards I have. Is anyone else wishing to address us under items 6B3, 6B4, 6B5? Okay, I'll close that public portion for that. Uh, before we get started, I do want to thank all the residents and the staff for their hard work on this. This is a working document. I think there's a lot of, you're going to hear a lot tonight. There's a lot of stuff that's going to be amended, fixed, changed during this process. You know, we've had numerous public input meetings. I mean, it was stated, this has been going on for over two years. I believe we've had over 30 public meetings on this topic. And I do want to really recognize and appreciate the residents' dedication, our staff's dedication. I mean, we're all here because we want to improve in, in our quality of life. I don't think anyone on this dais is saying, I know I'm a third-generation native. I know there's some other natives on, on this body that we're not here to say, what can we do to make us the worst possible place in the world? We're here to work with you to improve the quality of life for our residents. And we know it's important that we proactively plan for growth. Um, the city council's dedicated that. The, the City of Tempe and Maricopa County in general is projected to see over the next two decades, a population is set to hit just here over 250,000 by 2050 here in our community, in the urban district, and that's what we're talking about. You know, it's just supposed to double our population. And that's a, it's really important that people are moving to the urban core, and this is something that we're trying to be proactively addressed with feedback from our residents, feedback from people, the stakeholders in the community that are looking at building in this community for the betterment of this community. I just want to really, you know, to think, I know this has been a big challenge, and I know Chad and his team has worked hard. I know our residents are, you know, commenting, and we still expect you to comment. I just, I mean, this is just the first read, and I know a question was asked earlier from the council to our Mr. Weaver. You know, we could delay it. We could, we just, this is a process that we're working to get some type of framework in motion for us as we move forward. So it's a first read for the Urban Core Master Plan and its accompanying documents. There's still some things that I mentioned earlier that's going to be changed based on some of the, the feedback that we heard from you tonight that we're going to be hearing, uh, from the council. And I know Chad, we want to hear from you about the updates on the feedback from our work-study session that we had. And I know that you want, you want to hear from us, Chad, as well, from the council. So if you could come forward, Chad, and, and if you're going to stand here, if you're going to sit next to Judy, um, to kick off where we are, I'd greatly appreciate that.
Thank you, Mayor. Judy moved the chair, so you don't want me over there, so I'll be here instead. Mayor, Council, Chad Weaver, again, community development. Just briefly to update you on some of the things we've been up to since the, the work-study session. We, we have a slideshow ready, if you would like to, to, to go back and discuss some things that we've discussed before, but I didn't think I would leave, lead off with that in, in case it was just repetitive for you. So a couple of things that the council gave us consensus on and direction on at the work-study. Uh, one was that the UC1 heights be lowered. We had them at 160 feet, and consensus seemed to be around 100, 125 feet. The draft now reflects 125 feet. Uh, number two was the city council's role in the decisions on projects in UC1 and 2. Uh, there are a few options there. The one that is in the, in the language right now is that the city council would act as the deciding body instead of the DRC, which is the current method. Another method would be that the city council meeting would be added after DRC, similar to zoning, but still a little quicker process. And then the last method was a previous draft left those decisions at the DRC level with just a design review only, as we do now for most cases. The, the third thing that was asked is for us to take those options out to the development community. Uh, we scheduled a meeting. The attendance was not great, so I can't say this is unanimous opinion, but among the folks that attended, uh, they were very strongly in favor of the taller height rather than the lower height, uh, and the shorter process rather than longer process. So they would, they, they felt strongly further beyond what we asked that, um, the real incentive for entering into some of these, uh, districts and, and design guidelines and things that we're creating would be administrative approval of some items, too. So obviously, DRC would be one step more, and then back to city councils, yet another step. So that is the feedback that they gave to us.
Okay. Any other questions for Chad on this? Yes, Councilmember Chin?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Chad. Thank you to you and your staff for the work that you've put into this. And I'd like to thank our neighbors and our community members for weighing in. I, as the mayor mentioned, that's what we're about in Tempe. We'll work together to, excuse me, continue to shape this together. I have a question. Um, you mentioned there were the decisions in UC1 and UC2. I need clarification, um, about, do you know where? Okay. The properties within the downtown UC1 and UC2 zones and a major development plan review, new development application would require a review and decision by the city council. I'm not sure that that's what I was agreeing to. I think, uh, if we took that at face value, that doesn't allow for an appeal process or secondary review. And so you skipped several steps with that. So you proposed, and there were three other options there. But even if you changed number two and, and were to strike end decision, I think what council, what I heard council saying was, we wanted to know about it. We wanted to be involved and be mindful of developments that were of a certain height. And, and I looked at council and mayor for consensus on that. But I don't think it was bring those plans directly to us for review and decision. Does that make sense?
I mean, it does. It's, it's not what I heard, but I'm happy to, to amend that. So we did bring the heights down a little bit, so if that has changed your view on that a little bit, then we're happy to listen to, to where you're comfortable now.
And, and I throw that out to my, to my mayor and council members.
Yeah, I, I think as we're going through, this is a working document, there's a lot of changes to it. I think that the way we have it now, if you explain it, it goes to the DRC, and then the DRC comes, then in, for the approval of the planned area development, then it comes to the councils. I, I would, you're saying you'd like to keep it as it is?
Not this.
Not this, right. Not as it's written.
Oh, you missed something?
Robert?
Okay.
Or Randy?
Well, no, just a couple of things. I think, I think there's a few things that I've, I've definitely heard from a lot of people within the community, and it's really unfortunate that we didn't have more people come out to the public meetings. But I know you've held a lot of meetings, and you guys have done extensive amount of work, and I'm really grateful for that. And I also want to say I'm really grateful to the developers and to the zoning attorneys, the ones that are here that really pay attention, because I know you're the ones that have to work through the system, and we want to be good partners. And so it's really, really important that we get this to the best document that we possibly can. So, and I understand, I feel like I've been on the council for a while, and, and I should even have a better understanding than I do, but, you know, I'm always looking for more clarity. I know somebody said that earlier about clarity and a better understanding, and I think that it is very complicated. You know, we're working on three big, large pieces with some pretty big changes in it. And what does that really mean, not only to the exact area, but to the neighbors and the residents that are surrounding that area, too? I mean, that's, that's definitely important, and I think the mayor nailed it when we said, we're doing it for the right reasons. We're all here because we want this to improve our quality of life in Tempe, and we have to proactive plan for the future. We are going to grow, and let's make sure that we grow in the, in the vision that we want. So I think it's really important that we get a lot of people involved in this. So I want to say, as much as I, I, and I think this comes to the clarity part with, with the councilmember Chin is saying, I don't necessarily agree with what she said, because I think I was one that brought this up before in regards to making sure that the, the council had some say in regards to what was hap- happening, going to happen, based on a higher height in that bonus area. See, and I think that we've heard a lot about, well, we need to more, we need some more clarity on this bonus piece, because it feels like, you know, for, for me, I mean, I want to make sure that we have a little bit of control over what that looks like, because we don't know what that looks like. So I think that's going to be an issue and something that we really have to work through and, and see if we can kind of get that resolved sooner than later. I don't think that we're in a hurry to, to have to approve that particular piece of it right now. And we talked a little bit about what that timeline looks like, so. And I, I appreciate the information that we got regarding the historic concerns. I think as, you know, I mean, downtown Mill, Mill Avenue was really significant to Tempe and still is. So we need to hang on to, to, I think, some of that history, whatever, whatever we can do and incorporate it with, within our growth. I, I, I will still, still say this, too. I, I don't feel like I'm going to rush to get anything done. I want to get it done right. I want to be inclusive as we possibly can. But I do, at the same time, think that the council does need to have a part in that process. It doesn't have to be specifically what you said, so I'm open to whatever that might look like. But I do feel like, you know, I think Councilmember Chin's right in regards to making sure that the process is fair to the applicants, too. So whatever that process is, however we are involved, I think we still need to have some involvement, especially if it has to do with the bonus and what that, what we're giving back in regards to that bonus piece. So that's my two cents, Mayor.
Councilmember Adams and Councilmember Keating?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just a few things I wanted to point out. I think the, the, um, Urban Core Master Plan, that the floor plate is too small. And I'm just picturing these tall, skinny buildings everywhere with only a $20,000, $20,000 square foot floor plate, and that just, it doesn't make sense as far as housing expenses to, to developers. We have already have these other buildings that have larger floor plates. I'm not saying that they have to go high at all. That's not what I'm saying, but I just want them to look normal. Um, and also, um, since, I've gotten a lot of feedback that the urban code district, um, has actually had significant changes from the original draft and that, um, we haven't had a lot of, uh, public input after the draft was, uh, updated. So this is not something that we need to rush into. I think we need to slow down and really get more feedback from the public. The history of Mill Avenue is so important to us, uh, and I don't think that needs to be rushed either. So this just doesn't feel like it's, it's in the good place to go forward. And I would like to delay the second hearing until we have a lot more public input and more information. Thank you.
Councilmember Keating?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, thank, thank you very much, Chad. I know you've spent, you know, two years and, you know, a lot of staff time, a lot of time and effort to bring this forward. Um, I, I certainly appreciate, you know, all the work you've done on it. And, you know, I appreciate the process. I don't think there's anything nefarious going on as far as that's concerned. Um, I think it was Commissioner Amorosi who said that, you know, it is time to update the general plan. But, you know, I, that being said, and I, I certainly agree with him. If I'm correct, he did say that. I thought it was, but, um, I, I do have some concerns about what we've heard today. I'll preface this with saying, you know, I agree with the mayor that, you know, in, in our packet, you know, we're looking at an additional, you know, 45,000 people moving into our urban core over the next 20 years. And, you know, 20 years seems like forever, but 20 years ago, Tempe Town Lake wasn't there. So, you know, as I get older, I find that time just goes by faster. So, you know, as I get older, I find that time just goes by faster and faster, so I imagine those 20 years will go by pretty quickly. So I think the time to start planning for that is now, and I think you've done a lot of that in what you've, you've brought forward. I don't subscribe to the idea that additional housing is causing housing prices to go up. I think additional housing takes the pressure off housing prices. And, you know, I, I recently shared a study from the Uptown Foundation, I might be getting that, I name wrong, that did, surveyed cities all over the country and found every unit of housing you add, as long as it's market rate or below, really takes the pressure off the existing affordable stock. So, you know, I think the idea that because we're adding housing to the city of Tempe, because Tempe's population has quadrupled since 1970, you know, because we're adding the housing for those people, now housing prices are going up, I, I really think it's just the opposite. If we did not add all those housing units and our population had quadrupled, it'd be a heck of a lot more expensive to live in the city of Tempe. I agree with a lot of what Mr. Barger had said and Ms. Rydel as far as, and I, you know, I'm on record of saying this at the last meeting, you know, I think to, to limit height in certain areas where, where height is appropriate, of course, you know, we're, we're leaving something on the table there. And again, that's because, in, in my view, of someone who subscribes to, you know, Keynesian economics, I guess, is that every unit that we're not building in the air is a unit that has to be replaced somewhere else as we work towards our additional housing goal, because again, there's no sign that all of a sudden Tempe is going to stop growing. Anytime in the near future recession or not, Tempe grew through the, the great recessions, has been growing through every single recession, and that's, you know, certainly with the addition of the lake and the, the construction of the freeways around our city. I don't think that genie is going back in the bottle, so it's very appropriate that we, that we work to, to plan for the future. Otherwise, the housing situation is only going to get worse. One thing I do like, I would like to point out is, is I would like to take a look at a section 1.13, you know, as far as the, the limitations on the square footage and height, just as Mr. Barger suggested, to not exclude something that we don't already have. I don't think it makes sense to say, look, we got these buildings and they're great. We all like these buildings, with the exception maybe of W6, but we can't, you guys can't, we can't do this anymore type of thing. So these are the things that I would like to see. I, I don't, if we don't legally have to do the Urban Core District at the same time as the general plan amendment, I'm fine with splitting that baby and then working out the details of, because it sounds like a lot of the residential concern and some of the business concern that we've had is around the, the bonus program that your team is working on. So if it is the case, and, and I'm, that's how I'm understanding it, please tell me if I'm wrong, Chad or Judy, that as long as we start the process, we can then, you know, devote more time to the Urban Core District and kind of flush out those details that may make, you know, some members of the public a little bit more, less weary of what those details may be. So, you know, that's just the feedback I want to give you. I'm very appreciative of, of the effort you've put into this. Again, you know, I know this is, this is such a huge undertaking that it, it's hard to kind of wrap your head around the consequences of every little thing and every little comma and every little, you know, you know, change. So as we continue to work to kind of flush this out, you know, I, I would ask you to, to think about, you know, the, the concerns that I've raised in, in the council, or the members of the council have raised and members of the public as well. But if it's amenable to the council, I think you should consider splitting up the general plan amendment and the Urban Code District.
Okay. Before, thank you, Councilmember Keating. Before we move, I, one of the questions I had, and I, and I brought this up and I talked to some members of the public though, regarding historic preservation. Mill Avenue from 4th Street to 6th Street, there are several historic properties, and I know, first, I know we're really quite limited on the tools that we have to try to preserve these historic properties. I also know that many of these are not on the city's list for historic properties. So I'm wondering, how can we, you know, you heard, I mean, Stu Seifer mentioned it, but how can we use the Urban Code District and the Urban Core Master Plan? How would that work with these types of the historic properties? And do you think including these properties in a historic core would help give us some tools to preserve those historic properties?
Mayor, thank you for that question. It, it is a difficult challenge to preserve the buildings that we don't, and, and we can't force preservation, we have Prop 207, all those things to work around. Our firm belief with the, with language that we've drafted in both the plan and the UC is that it gives us the best opportunity to preserve those buildings, but we will have to work with owners at the time they come forward. My, my hope is that we can utilize the bonus provisions that, that are coming, and I realize I, I thank everyone for their indulgence that we're holding this back for a, an unveiling at some point, but we think that will be the best tool that will allow us to preserve buildings with the HP portion of that bonus while granting folks then the height that they're seeking on, on a adjacent site or, or nearby the building or the transfer of development right proposal, it could be down the street or in a different district entirely. But, but we think that the language we've put in place makes it clear that it's valuable. We've highlighted that historic core on the maps shows what we're talking about, sets people on notice. We've had discussions before when we were talking about the, an item also on the agenda tonight with Broadway, that when it's in, in the language and people are researching it, they'll see that. They know it's something that we're going to be interested in talking to them about. And so that's how we're trying to set that forth. So if I could for just a moment on the timeline and the approvals of the various items here, we just met last week with our consultant team that's working on the bonus provision. They have made a tremendous progress. We let them know of what our deadline to put things on October 17th was, and so they promised us something that we could take to you to, to give you. It won't be a final product by any means, but to start to give you some greater comfort level. So my feeling is at that time, it's our job to make you comfortable. If you aren't yet at that point, then as I've mentioned before, we have the opportunity to, to take it till November, and we'll continue to work with all the folks that have comments. There, there are a few left that we can probably resolve. There are a few left that we probably will not resolve. We'll just bring them to you and say, well, they want X and, and we're suggesting Y, and you have a reasonable opportunity to choose either side. So there seems to be a greater comfort level with the major general plan amendment and the Urban Core Master Plan. We could conceivably adopt those next month and hold off on the code, if that is the, the piece that people need the most attention with, but we can keep them together and, and hold them all back if that's where the council feels is necessary, so.
Okay, thank you. And before I go to Councilman Navarro, the bonus, we need to shore that up. Would that also be, would the public also be included in, so they understand what the bonus looks like and what's included for bonus?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, so then we'll go, the public will have an opportunity to weigh in. Okay, and then also, I know we're having another meeting in October, but it's not going to be the final meeting, but we have, for reasons why, we have to hear that particular item. Okay. And also, what can we do? We talked about in the Urban Core lowering the height in the UC1. Can you reemphasize what, what would, did you hear from the work study session on that? It was 90 to 125 feet?
Yes, well, we, what we did based on, what we heard at the work study session was take the 160-foot height in the UC1, which is not this historic orbit area around there, from, from 160 to 125. And the way it's drafted now, it's at 125. So any building larger than that would have to come back to council for some type of PAD process, which is essentially what we're doing now for those very tall ones. In that respect, it wouldn't be much change. We would at some point have the bonus provision that would hopefully make it a little more clear as to how they get there and what the value to the community would be.
Okay, and the reason why I, I brought this up too, I, I think some others, council members did, it's important that we, if we want individuals to opt in, because then we able to look at other opportunities for the bonus, whether it be affordable housing, whether it be, you know, having a more sustainable building or energy efficient building that really complements our climate action plan that we have in place. So that's some of the tools that we're looking at by, given that, instead of just giving carte blanche, opportunities just go straight. We get some, something back for the community with the bonus plan. That's the intent. And then, okay, I'll have more questions. But Councilman Navarro?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and thank you, Chad and, and your, and your staff, and, and obviously a lot of time on this, and, and thank you to the community, because that is, is great to hear from a variety of different people, from business residents, developers, you know, and I think overwhelmingly, we kind of heard some of the sentiment of, of, of making sure that we're doing this right and making sure that we're doing it appropriately. And I think it's going to be addressed at the council. We're going to try to take one or two or three of these items and maybe do them separate. Legally, I want to make sure that we're passing the mustard, that we're not going down a road, you know, down, the city's going to go down the road and we're going to be challenged where we're not really set up. So, and if it's up to the council, you know, coming up on this next meeting, on the next presentation, I, I'm really not in any hurry to get anything done. If, if the presentation comes back to us and we're still, eh, we're, we're not 100% on this, the residents are not 100% on this, we're going to delay it. We're going to make sure that we get this thing right. I know we get close to a finish line often on, on a lot of big issues, and this is no reflection to you, Chad, it's just the fact that our residents tend to get involved right at the end. And we tend to broadcast our, or it's getting noticed right at the end, because it's going to happen. I would love, and I challenge Phil and everybody else, I would love to figure out communication to, I can get mass amount of people to these meetings to get real input. And the challenge is, you know, our residents do care and our residents have lives, and some can be there and some can't. And, and the, and the challenge to that is, we hear from, from, of, of, from a lot of times the same people, we, we need to hear from more people. We need to hear from different people, and I'd love to feel and have that opportunity. But at the same time, we do a great job on trying to communicate as best we can with the, with the tools that we have in front of us, social media. And I challenge anybody out there, you got a better way to get information out, please let the city know, because I'm all for it, and I think this council is all for it too. Long and short, developing a plan, providing some guidance to our future, providing some guidance to things like our, our climate change, things like our affordability is smart for this council to start to achieve. We're not going to please everybody on, on the direction we're going. I think everybody gets pleased on the fact of what Tempe is doing and what we've created and the atmosphere we've created, and, and the passion is always felt around the core, because we have some great neighborhoods and people that are very proud of where they're living. I'm very proud of where we, I live right now presently today. And, and the thing is, we want to make sure we're always doing it right. So with that being said, you know, the general plan amendment, it sounds like it's one thing that we probably can get through. I think the other stuff, we need to take a little more, more time. I'm okay if they want to do a presentation on this. I want to know via staff though, how the word's going to get out, how we're probably going to get to the community, give it one more slash shot to get some better input. I know there's some last minute changes and details that we probably want to get out there and talk about with a little more depth, so that people feel a little bit more comfortable and we get more information back. But long and short of it is, if we don't get it, if it, I'm not under any pressure to get it done next, next meeting. If it takes a couple meetings after that, that's, so be it. But let's do it right, long and short.
Vice Mayor Kubi?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I wanted to address one of Karen Gitlitz's points, and it was about the major plan amendment that you thought it should go to a vote or that it's a violation of the, of the voter's will. And it, it is part of the law that major plan amendments are allowed and are, you have to do it by October, you know, or at least introduce it by October. So I do want to push back a little in that, I don't think that is a violation. According to the law, that is a part of the whole general plan process, is that you can have major plan amendments. I understand, you know, where you're coming from, and, but just wanted to clarify that. And I also want to speak to Commissioners Brown and Amorosi. I really respect what you were telling us as commissioners. I, I value your opinion, and it's kind of ironic that we're saying, don't rush it. It's been almost two years, but don't rush it. But the point is, I, I work a lot in editing and editing major documents, and often the major work is done in the last month. That's where everyone's tuned in, everyone's focused, and we finally can get, the work that's been taking 17 months can condense into a flurry of activity. So I really appreciate the point that you made, and it's a lot about the, the bonuses and the, the density bonuses and, and how we're going to really look at those and analyze those, and we, we don't even have that information. So it seems like there is going to be consensus here that we're going to probably want to continue it past October 17th. I want to mention one thing that hasn't been brought up, and that's traffic demand management. We are looking at a climate action plan of, of having that be a major impetus for our transportation, transportation planning for the future, and traffic demand management, the way we would see it through our climate action plan is through membership in this Traffic Management Association, and that's the way we'll sort of operationalize it. But it's so important when we're looking at this area to incorporate language about traffic demand management, because if we're going to be, all this development already is causing such stresses and such pressures on traffic, and we all feel it, we all feel it painfully. It's karma. I had a really hour and a half to get from here to Escalante a few, a few weeks ago, and it's scarred me. But I think we have to have language in all the regulatory documents about traffic demand management, and I go so far as to say, why not consider making it a requirement? If you're going to opt in to any of these programs that you have, that we require the developer to be part of traffic demand management, that's not a taking, that's not a violation of 207. When you think about it, what would be a violation is if we allow development just to happen willy-nilly, and then the traffic gets so bad that the actual land is valued less, because people don't want to live there. So I, I really want to look at, hopefully our traffic staff can come up with some language that we can incorporate in all the regulatory documents. Mentioned the bonus plan, and my concern is, I, we haven't even seen it yet, and so I shouldn't anticipate problems, but if the same amount of points are given to a developer who wants to put a shower in for his employees as to protect a historic building, like, that's not going to be okay. I mean, I want to see, I want to see what we want prioritized reflected in that bonus plan, but I, I agree, that's yet to come. My main point though, my main concern is about historic preservation, and we've heard from Stu Seifer, we've heard from Joe Nucci in our communications today, and I, I'm very worried, because I think that the guidelines, we've, we've incorporated guidelines in the Urban Core Master Plan, but the specific protections for historic properties are still lacking. And to me, we need to see that the, the general plan amendment, that the Urban Code, that the Urban Core Master Plan, they all, all these, all the guidelines need to be included or referenced specifically in the regulatory documents. And the development bonus point program, it has to be vetted so that historic or historic buildings are strongly protected. So we can say in the Urban Core Master Plan that we value historic, our historic character, but if we don't have the specific regulatory guidelines, then it's all going to be for naught. And I know we've done a really good job at reaching out to developers, and they're the people whose livelihoods and who are before us every, every week at council presenting their, their properties, and I understand why you reached out to them, but I, I would hope we'd have consensus from the council that, that you and Ryan sit down with the Historic Preservation Foundation and work out some of these issues, because there are a lot of ideas presented. I don't want to go over every single one of them here tonight, but I think it's really crucial. You started the, the process sitting down with the Historic Preservation Foundation, and you made sizable progress. And I, I think that there needs to be another meeting where you can really iron out some of these issues, and one of them involves step backs. I realize that have every building from 4th to 6th Street stepped back would create a monotony of style that maybe you don't want, but it seems to me that we need to look at increasing step backs. If we're going to allow the height, allow extra height, then insist on, on step backs. And to me, the 20-foot step back isn't adequate enough. And if you could, if we have consensus of council, that there could be a meeting with the Historic Preservation Foundation, if not the whole foundation, because that might be difficult, at least with Stu Seifer and Joe Nucci, who are, who are driving a lot of the issues that I think are fully represented by the foundation. Is there consensus for that?
I, I support that. I mean, I, I brought that up earlier, but yes.
No, I could support that too. And the other thing is, when, I think visually, when people are talking about what that looks like, it'd be great to see, to see what that looks like, 22 versus this being that feet. And long and short of it is, it, it's an opportunity to visually see it and do it right, have a good discussion about it, because what does that look like? You're talking 90 feet, now everyone has a different perception of that.
And just to conclude, just, we, we value our history in Tempe, and we are going to leave a legacy by this decision that we make in, presumably before the year is out. And I think we have an opportunity to continue the commitment that a lot of our foremothers and forefathers set down, but if we lose that opportunity, we won't be able to necessarily go back. And I don't want us to send a mixed message with the, with the regulatory documents not aligning on, on historic preservation. So with that, I, I yield my time.
Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. And sorry about this, Chad. I have this written down, but I forgot to mention it, and it unfortunately follows on to what Vice Mayor Kubi just said. Let's make sure we're taking a larger look at historic preservation. You know, Mr. Yates brought up the point, you know, what would happen if we lose these historic buildings and now there's 90-foot towers up there? I don't think that would ever happen, because the council would be insane to allow that to happen, but let's make sure that that's codified, you know, have the meeting, absolutely. But let's just make sure that there's protections and But let's just make sure that there's protections in place for those historic buildings. Because you look at what is Varsity Tavern now, you know, it was a drugstore and you see the picture, you know, from like 1890 and that's really cool that that building is still there. It's still in the heart of our downtown as Tempe has kind of grown all around it. It reminds me of, I think it's St. Mary's Church in New York City, that all these buildings are just all around it, but this little church is still sitting there because it's been there forever and it'd be unthinkable to get rid of that building. And I think it'd be unthinkable to get rid of some of the buildings that are in our historic corridors. So I agree with what Vice Mayor Kubi said and let's just make sure that we're somehow putting in some checks and guarantees that future council members and mayors won't be able to undo, you know, what we would like to see Mill Avenue stay as without, you know, lifting heaven and earth to do so first.
But I know, but I agree with what Councilmember Keating said and what Vice Mayor Kubi said and that's why I brought up the historic part. We don't have, we have very limited tools now, so I don't want to give a false impression that whatever we're going to do is helping preserve what we have. I mean, if you look at the existing document we have now, the height, what's the actual height right now in that area for the historic buildings? You can go up to what, 90 feet?
Right now, there's 50 feet and 100 feet.
50 feet and 100 feet. Okay. So what we'd like to look at is what can we do to help ensure what we can, what we have authority of to help preserve the historic buildings that we do have? I don't want to give a false sense that by having this meeting and working with everybody, all those protections are going to be in place because quite honestly, the state legislature has pretty much, the state has taken up most of those tools away from us. Vice Mayor.
To the point, I know that the city of Phoenix has a pretty strong ordinance they passed a few years back that has a certain element of protection for buildings that are 50 years or older. And I'm kind of a historic, I need to be preserved myself because I'm older than 50. But I hate to see Phoenix have a stronger historic preservation guideline and rules than, than Tempe. And I think we need to look, and we've spoken about that offline, about the opportunity to look at and assess buildings and our historic inventory is going to help us with that, to look at buildings that are over 50 years old. And we can't necessarily stop from demolition, but we can also, we can slow down the process and look for opportunities for reuse and all that. So this may not, that may not be part of all of these regulatory documents, but in the future, in the near future, we need to be looking at how we can preserve buildings that are 50 years old because they are now officially historic in my mind.
Okay. So moving forward for the next meeting, we have a lot of tasks, I believe, that we've given you. Do you need more clarification?
For another meeting?
I don't think so. We're, most of these issues are issues we knew were somewhat outstanding. We're going to continue to work with all the folks that are willing to continue working with us and refine these things to the extent we can to gain your comfort level. So we'll continue to do that.
May I ask you a question? Do we have council consensus about the traffic management, demand management? Because I feel that for that to be ignored and within this plan is, is going to come back and haunt us.
I would like to point out, we're definitely not ignoring it. We don't have it applicable to every, every property, every project in the district. We have it, we have it applicable based upon the, I believe it's the average traffic of a particular user. So if they've reached a certain threshold, they have to subject themselves to a certain threshold of TDM and then there's, there's two thresholds. We have some folks here that could probably speak to it if you'd like to, but we can also just get just some information along that line between now and then as well. But it is reflected, certainly.
But I don't think it's throughout all the three documents and it's not necessarily aligned with our climate action plan, which we may or may not be approving next month. So, or in November. So it just seems fitting to align those plans.
Can I speak a comment in regards to the traffic thing? I mean, I don't disagree in the sense of working on traffic. I think the more we can talk about traffic and mitigate traffic, I think that's a great thing. But I think at the same time too, it's, I don't want to make them do anything that we're not already doing. So whatever that might look like, I want to make sure that there's things that we are also doing as a community to make sure that we're doing our fair share too. So it'd be good if, maybe even in a memo to us or an email, you could kind of let us know what that looks like. Thanks, Chad.
Thank you. And before, I would like to remind those that are watching, those here in the audience, if you could, for more facts and information on the urban core, if you could go to the There's a lot of facts and frequently asked questions there. I would highly recommend you look at that website. And we obviously would love to continue to get your feedback because we're going to continue to go out and get feedback. So with that, thank you, Chad. To be continued. And then at this time, if we could take a five minute recess. All right, we're going to go ahead and reconvene our council meeting. And we're going to move on to item 6B6 is to introduce and hold a first public hearing to adopt a resolution for a major amendment to the general plan 2040 for a projected land use map amendment from industrial to new mixed use industrial category with a general plan text amendment for approximately 560 acres and a projected residential density map amendment from zero dwelling units per acre to a new, up to 45 dwelling units per acre category with a general plan text amendment on approximately 67 acres along Broadway Road frontage and up to 15 dwelling units per acre on approximately 493 acres for the Broadway industrial hub, the Tempe Maker District bounded by Priest Drive to the west, Union Pacific Railroad to the east and Broadway to the north and Southern Avenue to the south. The Apogee is the city of Tempe. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for October 17th, 2019. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address this on this item? I do have a couple cards. Mr. Sullivan, come on down.
My name is Drew Sullivan. I live in 85282. I own a business in 85281. First of all, I wanted to address the process. I think it's ridiculous, and I've heard this tonight, I've heard this other times, that the criteria for whether or not a project such as the urban master plan moving forward or the resolution which I'm here to oppose for the Broadway mixed use court or maker corridor, that for such a project such as the urban master plan moving forward is the validation I've heard touted tonight of the public's participation in city meetings. I can think of a number of project and council meetings, some packed with concerned residents, where the city advances a project or projects despite a large number of objections. The city is holding public meetings that advance the city and to a large extent developers' agenda to advance the master plan, knowing full well that these meetings are professional settings with their own language and process that is exclusionary to many residents, particularly some of the most impacted. Second, in regards to the Makerspace, Makerspace redevelopment, opportunity zones, it's gentrification. The city will not take concerns over housing and affordability seriously. It's been brought up for, I don't know, five years, I think I've been coming. While also gobbling up federal grants and aiding the uber wealthy with tax programs that are transforming the city to the benefit of landlords and developers. The thing about the existing housing, which is increasingly unaffordable to low wage workers or as you call them workforce housing, even though the business survey the city sent out last month had a question specifically asked over how concerned you are over available workforce housing. My own manager has left. She worked within two blocks of my business. She now lives out of the city and commutes 10 miles to work every day because she could no longer afford to live in the Maple Ash Farm and Wilson neighborhood. Unaffordable housing hadn't been an issue in Tempe until the city went all in on luxury, density, fuel mantle, street cars and opportunity zones for tax havens. This progress makes things worse for one type of renter or buyer, those who aren't making a lot of money or have lots of money at their disposal. A mixture of housing was when someone was making $150,000 a year and someone was making $20,000 a year and they could both afford to rent a house in the same neighborhood. Sometimes that meant living with roommates. Specifically in the Maple Ash Farm and Wilson neighborhood and even more specifically along Broadway, there's many low income apartment housing on Broadway that will be gone if this happens. And I'm going just off the And I'm going just off the examples that we've seen over and over in Tempe over the last few years. How is it that you can't acknowledge the change in hardship that this redevelopment will bring? It seems as though we're in an era of a city at war with its working class and poor residents, specifically those who have had the misfortune of living near redevelopment areas and transportation projects. And there is increasingly, and this is increasingly is more and more of Tempe. What will the council do to protect affordable housing? It's almost laughable at this point. I don't have a lot of my friends that live in the Maple Ash neighborhood anymore. They're gone. They've left that area of Tempe. I moved out of that area of Tempe. I couldn't afford it. If I wanted to buy a place, which I did, I had to move outside of a place that I wanted to live. This is five, six years ago. Additionally, why does 11% industrial vacancy justify this type of dislocation of our long term residents? Seems like there's other options than an entire corridor of redevelopment, especially using coded buzzwords like Makerspace that attract developers and attack attract companies that would like to see the area transform into a luxury or servicing higher income space. So those are my thoughts. Last time I went back and everyone had something to say and then I had to wait till the end of the meeting to come back up. So I don't know if anyone has anything.
Sullivan, I just wanted to address a couple of points that you made. One, no one is talking about rezoning. We're talking about adding overlay use on existing industrial zoning. So that's not, that's not existing apartments. There is no housing in the area that we are talking about doing the mixed use overlay on. It would open it up to housing at that point, but it wouldn't be luxury. Another thing I want to mention is this is not gentrification. It's the exact opposite of gentrification. Gentrification is getting rid of existing affordable stock to replace it with higher end stock, you know, for higher end income earners. This is taking an area that has no housing whatsoever and opening it up to additional housing. And by the way, the intention of this space is to be a workforce and affordable housing hub. And we've already seen projects that will be coming back to this council very shortly. One of which through a development attorney you mentioned and tied to the streetcar will be 100% workforce units. So the reason why we can do that in this area is because of the price of the land. The land in downtown corridor is so costly that we really need a developer or some sort of angel investor to come in and say, look, I'm gonna eat a lot of costs to make this happen. The Broadway is a completely different story, whereas the land isn't as expensive. It is in proximity to the downtown area. So that in our hope, obviously, we can't mandate affordability levels of projects that that come forward. What we can do is say this project or that project isn't within the character of the area that it's being brought to. So that is a tool for us. So we are going to see at least one, and I suspect many more affordable and workforce housing units going into an area again that doesn't have housing. We're not, no one's talking about getting rid of the any existing housing in that area. And there's one last thing I want to comment on. It's often said, you know, all we do is approve luxury developments and I mean, and I could be wrong, but I think since I've been on council, I don't think we've approved one luxury development. I think it's all market rate. So I just want to throw that out there that, you know, we talked about buzzwords and emotionally charged words. You know, it luxury, market rate, affordable workforce, they mean very specific things. So I understand that there is, and I'm not saying this is you, but there is an agenda to say everything we're doing is luxury and it's not for us. It's for the other guy. It's something that we can never obtain. And that's just not true. And as I mentioned earlier, the study which I'm happy to send to you and you could review it. I'm happy to sit down with you and discuss Broadway further with you if you'd like as well. You know, clearly states that if we don't keep adding units to it, a growing area and that genie is not going back in the bottle. I mean, this area has been growing since the end of, you know, fascism. Then then the pressure on the markets only continue to grow and grow and grow and even market rate units, which again, we would all prefer affordable and workforce when we can get them, but we can't mandate them. And this is an opportunity for us to look at another area of the city when those kind of developments make a lot more economic sense to people who would who would build them for us. So I think that's the goal of of the Broadway project. It's not to kick anyone out because we're not even touching any of those apartments. It's not to chase out businesses, which was a concern that that we've heard. It's really to kind of open an area of the city that has been underserved, has been under, I don't want to say developed, but has certainly not prospered as well as the rest of the city. And we see that through the vacancy rates in that industrial area. We see that through the average rents in that industrial area. That and we see it through our business and residential community survey that that they're they're much more likely to be unsatisfied with the city of Tempe if you live along that quarter. So I think that's what, in fact, I know that's what the Broadway proposal is trying to address. And I think that, you know, if approved, and I'm very hopeful that it will be, you know, five, 10 years from now, we'll see a lot of more diverse housing stock in the area that can it can be done from an economic sense.
I I wasn't under any impression that there was going to be housing on the south side of Broadway other than the Wells Fargo building being turned into housing. What my impression or what I was saying though, is that the ripple effect is that landlords across the street on the north side who do run apartment buildings and who do own homes in the southern part of the Maple Ash Farmer Wilson extended over to Priest will take note that they are living in a buzzworthy area and that's an excuse to justify raising rents. Diverse housing is like I said, it's when I lived in the neighborhood and maybe there was a guy that owned a BMW who lived next door to me. He could afford to rent a house. Maybe I lived with a couple of other people, but I couldn't live in the house. That was diverse housing. This hinges on promises that I don't believe this council can keep. I mean, it's a nice thing to say, and I think we'd all like to believe you, but I just haven't seen that sort of goodwill come from developers in this town.
Thank you for clarifying.
Thank you. Thanks, Drew. All right. Next one is Larry DeGenis.
All right, Mr. Mayor, members of council, I want to thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Larry DeGenis and I reside in the Holdeman neighborhood where I currently serve as the chair of my neighborhood association. So I have come here tonight to express my utmost support for this plan. In fact, if you had to ask me, what is the single most important issue that impacts the future of my neighborhood? I would say that this is it. The Holdeman neighborhood where I live happens to be located just north of Broadway Road. And we're located between Hardy Drive and Priest Drive. So we are really located right in the heart of this corridor. And I believe revitalizing the Broadway corridor would have a very positive impact on our community. Our neighborhoods really need more amenities along Broadway Road that we could have easy access to or be able to walk or ride a bike to. And we want more retail. We want more coffee shops. We want more restaurants. And more amenities along this road. And I believe this plan will make that possible. I also support a future streetscape project along Broadway Road between Priest Drive and Mill Avenue. This section of Broadway Road badly needs to be redone to make it more pedestrian and bicycle friendly. As outlined in the Vision Zero Action Plan, this section of Broadway Road is currently identified as one of the most dangerous streets in all of Tempe. So I really liked the recent project that was done a couple of years ago on Broadway Road just east of Mill Avenue. This was between Mill and Rural Road. I thought that was a great project and I really hope to see a similar concept to our section of Broadway Road as well. So one last additional suggestion I want to point or bring up. And that is I'm asking if we could potentially change the northern portion of the Maker District that is adjacent to Broadway Road and have this portion be considered strictly mixed use as opposed to mixed use slash industrial. And the reason why I'm requesting this one suggestion is this way we would just have more of a buffer from any potential new industrial buildings being built close to our neighborhoods. I do have a map that could better identify or illustrate this area I'm speaking of. I'm happy to come around and show you. Or maybe staff could help me put it up on the screen. I don't know if that's possible. But that is all the feedback I want to give tonight. And I want to thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak and I'm happy to answer any questions any of you may have.
Yeah, if you could see that map.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, so the area that I'm suggesting is this marked area in red on top here. And that is adjacent to Broadway Road and that's the northern portion of the Maker District. So the whole area right now is being, the city is suggesting changing that to mixed use slash industrial and which I'm okay with, but I would prefer if the very northern portion would just be strictly mixed use.
I hear what you're saying, but that would would that impact? I think that would impact the area, wouldn't it?
Thank you. So to clarify, any existing industrial would be grandfathered in. Thank you for, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's misspoke there. Yeah. All right. Thank you.
Next, Karen Gettles.
Karen Gettles, I live in the Maple Ash neighborhood. And I would like to commend you on this creative reinvention and plan for Broadway Road. I, listening to Drew, appreciate his comments. I understand what it's a real need that we have for more workforce housing and more mixed income housing where you have people of different incomes living there. I had understood this plan after, you know, looking at it as briefly as I had to be more along the lines of what Randy is talking about and I am hoping that it will be a place where we can see more workforce housing and actually put our housing plan, workforce housing plan into practice and come up with all kinds of incentives to developers to create these kinds of developments that have different levels of income in the same project. I think that is incumbent on you to figure out at this point and and put into practice. I agree too with Larry. I think that the street is in huge, it's dangerous and in huge need of refreshing and being made more pedestrian. It needs more neighborhood services. And I feel really excited about this project and its potential. I think this is an appropriate use of a major a major amendment to the general plan too. I don't think we're not changing zoning, as you said. It's not, it's huge, but it's within the constrictions of what we have to work with in the area. So I'm looking forward and hopeful that we'll see a lot of good stuff come out of this. Thank you.
Councilor.
Yeah, real quick. Thank you, Karen, for your comments. I appreciate that. I think you're spot on on noticing that we can do some real good within that area. And I think the overlay with the tax incentives really helps us play that part within that area. I hope, and I wish Drew was here, but I think, you know, to your point, a lot, this council really truly understands we want to try to bring in affordability. And I think we've even done studies on a national level on on what we're doing on a regional level. We are a city achieving that. I know it looks small, but man, we are doing a lot more than a lot of other cities and we're still continuing to go because the community has to be mixed. And to your point, that makes the vibrancy of the community and makes the vibrancy of your neighborhood, your asset after neighborhood. And people enjoy that type of style of living. And that's what we want to try hopefully provide throughout the committee. So I just want to thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, you heard, I know Randy's gonna comment as well. This is something that we have by looking at this, how we're looking at adopting this, not this meeting, but the next council meeting. This is going to give us the tools to get exactly what our affordable housing strategy talks about, exactly what we're looking for, quality of life for our residents. It gives us the ability to be innovative and creative. You know, Councilor Keating cited a study. This helps get to that study in terms of what the goal was in terms of livability. And that's something that should not go unnoticed, even though people say some things. I will be honest, this, we do care. We have taken action. And this really fits within our strategic priorities as a council as we move forward. So thank you for those comments. Councilor Keating?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Gettles. I just wanted to address something that you said and Mr. DeGenis had also talked about as far as the streetscape along Broadway Road. About a year ago, we actually added to our CIP budget some funding to to expand the right of way, add things like bike lanes. You know, and there's a, there's a section of the area that doesn't even have a sidewalk. So that was about a year ago. I think we put it for five years out. So hopefully four years from now. You know, once some of these projects that that we are certainly very hopeful start coming online, you know, we'll then be talking about those issues as well.
Right. Thank you.
That's all the cards I have. Is anyone else in the audience wishing to address this under this item six B five? Please get my, or six B six. Tim.
I had not planned on speaking tonight. I did want to listen to this discussion. I've attended the public meetings that have been the introductory meetings that have been for this and I was thrilled that this has been on my mind that this this area has needed help for decades and it's finally happening. And if you drive through these, this industrial area, you know, there's this vast opportunity for adaptive reuse. You know, it's a big buzzword adaptive reuse, but there are so many buildings back there that are, you know, beyond their 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 calendar. And, you know, there's an opportunity to really implement adaptive reuse. There's vast swaths of asphalt back there. We could do a lot of asphalt abatement back there. There's an opportunity to really create a district that is the new signature area for Tempe. You know, you look at areas like the issue research park, you know, that's, you know, a big, you know, buzz for Tempe, but here's an opportunity for something really new. It's not like, you know, a major development that's going to come in, you know? The idea that we can really change Broadway Road, change this industrial district into something unique and not necessarily mow it all down and, you know, put up something new. But I do think that this is one of the best things I've heard come to discussion in Tempe in a long, long time, and I really hope that it happens.
Could you, I know, we all know who you are, but could you please state your name for the record?
Tim Homer. I live on West Fairmont Drive.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
All right. Anyone else wishing to address this under item six B six? See none? This is just the first hearing. With that, we'll close the public portion. Maria, you gonna come forward? I don't know if you need to, but kind of give the overview of what we're looking at and then.
Yes, thank you. Hello, Mayor and City Council. I have to say I'm really heartened by the comments that I heard from all of you and from the public. I feel that maybe we were successful with the way we presented our message about the goal of this project. And it's always good when everyone understands what's going on. So a quick summary of the process to date. This process has actually been going on for about 18 months. We presented our innovation hubs to council about 18 months ago, and I'll show you a map in a second about what they look like. But that was the genesis of all this. And then we started with our council working group on Broadway in April. And then we started with our council working group on Broadway in April. Since then, we've done a lot of different things, including finding a consultant to help us develop this Tempe Maker District concept. We held public meetings. We had one in January just to introduce the concept and see what people thought about it. There was a lot of enthusiasm for it, and it was very well attended, and about 25 people at that meeting. Then when the city council voted to move forward with the, with the application process for the general plan amendment, we started doing that and had another public meeting during the summer, which was also very, very well attended. And again, a lot of enthusiasm from people that attended the meeting. So here's a, just a graphic showing all of the innovation hubs. Tempe has nine innovation hubs, and they are focused around our employment corridors. You can see they're all over the city, but they're all connected. And the connectivity is a very important aspect because transit is so important here in Tempe. But it shows you where our largest employment hubs are. And they're all unique in their character. But the one where we're talking the most about right now, of course, is the Tempe Maker District. And that's because it needs a little, a little boost, let's say. So when you talk about innovation hubs, you're talking about this innovation ecosystem between the economic networking and physical spheres. And we think that the Maker District is a terrific example of what this innovation ecosystem looks like in Tempe. As you saw on the map, you know, the, it's highly accessible. It's right off of Broadway, which is a major travel corridor, of course, proxim, approximated to the I-10 and to the downtown. There's also a lot of city investment that's going on in the neighborhood in four years on Broadway Road, as Randy said, but also this, starting next year on Alameda. We're going to do significant street improvements, bike paths, landscaping, and pedestrian amenities. So the city is already investing a lot into the area. And as also was mentioned, it is an opportunity zone, which I know has been somewhat controversial, but I think there, there might be a benefit to having tax incentives to do some development in this area. So the primary goals of the Maker District are really to look at the manufacturing that's there, which there, there already are makers there. We're not trying to create something that doesn't exist. The consultant that we hired came back and said, you know, you have a lot of people manufacturing goods there. And we said, yeah, we know, hence the Maker District. So we want to celebrate that manufacturing. We want to increase the base industry value there and grow supply chain in that area. We've talked to those businesses, and that's what they're looking for as well, to continue their success and vibrancy. We're hoping that this plan helps retain those businesses. That area has seen, has been in some disrepair. It has seen some increased vacancies, which is what caught our attention in the first place. And we thought since there, the area does have a lot of older stock buildings that are, were built at a certain time, and they're all industrial. They are on the obsolete side for today's industrial practices. So we had, that's, that's why there, there's a high vacancy there. It's been hard to get tenants to move in because they don't meet basic needs that they have for industrial uses. The principal one is ceiling heights. You know, ceiling heights, today's industrial users are looking for 30, 36 feet of ceiling height, and we have at best 20, some places 24, but most of them are less than 20 feet. So it's, you can see that's a significant hurdle. So we're hoping that by integrating the mixed use and creating this adaptive reuse opportunity through the new land use designation, we can revitalize the area. And then the made in Tempe branding, we think will really help to brand the area and celebrate those people that are there, the manufacturers that are there, and all, all of the manufacturing that happens in Tempe. Finally, the goal, as I mentioned before, with increased vacancies is to see if we can curb that a little bit. We know that vacancy can lead to blight, and we would hate for that to happen in this area. So we talked about the opportunity zone. I'm just going to keep going because I think that's boring. We all, we all know what that does. So the general plan amendment. The interesting thing that we want to make sure everyone knows is this is a land use designation, designation change. It is not a rezoning of the area. So what it's doing is taking the area from a general industrial land use into a mixed use industrial land use. And the purpose of that is to allow for adaptive reuse and new uses, principally light office, light industrial office, retail, and residential. The residential component being very important, as we've already mentioned tonight, the need for affordable and workforce housing. And I don't want to give too much away, but we have been working with a project that was, someone alluded to, that will be coming forward soon, that is 100% workforce housing and is in our Tempe Maker District right off of Broadway. So we think that that's a very exciting catalyst for both this project as well as the city's affordable housing strategy. So we think by bringing in these new uses, we'll be able to maintain the vibrant character of the area. And then also, this amendment will help promote sustainability and livability through a live-work-play environment, a 24/7 activation that, as we know, include, improves public safety. And then also having more housing options in that area will help us reach our 20-minute city goals, which is a very important sustainability achievement. So here are the maps. This is the current land use. As you can see, it's a big industrial block. There's some commercial on the edges. But we're looking to change it to this. So the proposed change is 100% mixed use slash industrial. What that means is that the industrial will not go away. Everything is still, you can still have industrial, you can have new industrial, but it also allows for mixed use to come into play. So if a mixed use project comes in, it'll go through the city's normal process through DRC. If they need to rezone, again, it goes through the normal process, would come to city council. Everyone will get to see it, the same as always. It just, what it does do is it, it, it allows the developer to skip the land use, the general plan amendment change. And here's the density that the mayor read about earlier. The current density is zero because there's no residential in this area right now. And we're looking to change it to, up to 45 dwelling units per acre on the brown portion, which is up top, and then the rest of it, about 15 dwelling units per acre. So, and with that, are there any questions?
First, I want to thank you for bringing this forward. Councilmember Keating, Councilman Navarro, and I, we were looking at this. Broadway Road has been a longstanding project. We started out a long time ago with Capstone Studios from ASU to look at Broadway as one of the focal entry points into our city. And so it's kind of coming into fruition, which is great. And as you mentioned and alluded to, and you know, this area is really known for industrial uses, and we have some great longstanding businesses like the Arizona United Dairyman, the processing plant, Crockett Honey, grocery store, you can buy the Crockett Honey. The Khalil Bottling Plant, that used to be Hensley there, off of, off of Hardy there, but now it's Khalil. These types of industrial uses really provide great value to our economic base here in Tempe. And also in this area, which is really good to know that we also have great local favorites, like Honeyman Suites is in there, Lost Home Pet Rescue is in this area, in this, in this Maker District area that we're calling. So I really pleased to hear that the businesses within the industrial hub are excited about the opportunity for what could be ahead of us. I do know that it's important, you already said that the industrial zoning is going to stay, but it's going to allow for additional uses, which I think is really going to help define the area and what one of our residents said earlier, really help change the dynamics of the area that Larry mentioned. And it's really important that whatever progress comes forward, that we really make sure that any project we have, it's really reaching out to the neighbors. Because this also fits within the character areas that we have throughout the city, and there is a character area for this, so it kind of matches with that. So make sure that when we do hear about progress coming forward, that obviously the public process, it provides great opportunities for people to get feedback. With that, I'm going to look to Councilmember Keating and Councilmember Adams.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I can't even believe this is 18 months. Like, how this feels compared to the kind of fatigue I had over the scooters is not even in the same universe. So I can't even believe this is a longer process than the scooters. But I'm very, very thrilled with what we've arrived at. And just because I am going to ask for a slight change, I'll say some thank yous first, even though usually you wait till then, but I'll do that on the 17th as well. So first, I want to thank the mayor and Councilmember Navarro, who are on this working group with me for their help in shaping this, bringing it forward. Of course, yourself and Donna and the entire economic development team, you know, could, absolutely couldn't have done it without your guys' expertise and your guys' vision for this area. Chad and Ryan and their, their planning team, of course, too, who was able to bring us a general plan amendment, you know, in a relatively short period of time. Look at the urban core, it took two years. They did this in six months. So, you know, it, kudos to them for that. Of course, the members of the public as well, whether they spoke for or against. You know, it's important that we have a public process, so I'm very pleased with that. One, one thing I did want to ask, this week we received a letter of support from the Tempe Chamber, which I'm very pleased to have. You know, we couldn't do this without the partnership with our business community. And I just want to make sure, one of the things you suggested we do is when we have, if, I'll say when, because I'm very hopeful that we do, when we do have these new, these new affordable and workforce housing units come to us, that there's always going to be a stipulation in those agreements that these people understand that they're moving into what is an industrial area. So there's not going to, you can't have this expectation where, oh, this truck was unloading 30,000 fidget spinners all night and kept me up. I mean, so like the same way, like you wouldn't have the expectation of running a condo at Hayden Square and saying, hey, look, these bars on Mill Avenue, I got to turn on the music because I got an early meeting. So as long as there's some acknowledgement in those development agreements that, look, you have to follow this, and I'm not sure what that looks like, I'll leave that to the experts to figure out. But I don't want a future council to be in a situation where all of these residents are coming back and saying, you know what, this, this industrial business is too loud for me. Because as the mayor mentioned, the exact, we do not want to chase away any industrial opportunities existing or in the future, you know, because of this mixed use overlay. So it's important that that be acknowledged and that not be something that the council then, future councils and mayors, you know, would take a look at and be like, well, yeah, I guess this isn't really that cool for that area. Because that expectation isn't a realistic one, and we want to make sure that that area is still a very viable and welcoming option for our businesses.
Thank you. I'll take a note.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Marie and your team, Donna Kennedy, and I think Rose and Chelsea was involved in this somewhat. Also, you really did a great job at communicating. I attended one of the neighborhood meetings, and it was just, it was diverse, and everyone had, had the opportunity to speak. It was inclusive. It was everything that you, you want from a public meeting to really get everyone's feedback. I think that's one of the reasons this has gone so well. I mean, this feels different than our general plan discussion earlier to me. And I think a lot of it is because of the way you communicate and you include everyone in the decision-making process. And when we do that, we get such better projects out of it. And I just, I'm very excited also that we're going to have workforce housing. It's, we really are, as a council, trying to promote more workforce housing. And I know sometimes it seems like it's, you know, a cumbersome process and, and that, but I know that my colleagues and I speak for, really wanting to do that more and, and we're promoting it. So thank you for all your hard work on this. 18 months, that wasn't too bad of a process. And I just really appreciate this and look forward to this transforming Broadway.
Thank you.
Donna Savage?
Eric, you know, just a couple of things, and I'll be the first one to say, when you just came up, I was a little skeptical. I was like, oh, I don't know if this is really what we want to do. But you guys really worked at it, and I think you kind of thoroughly vetted out and, and resolved a lot of the concerns I think a lot of individuals, including myself, had. So I certainly do appreciate the work, and I think Councilmember Adams nailed it. I mean, it was a really great team effort across the departments, and I'm, you know, I'm grateful for that and for the working group and for Randy being super persistent and always bugging me about it. So now I can, I appreciate it, and I think some of us that have been here a long time, sometimes change is a little bit hard, but realize that, you know, we are going to grow and we are going to change, and, you know, we want it to do it the way we want to. And I will say this, I 100% support the stipulation. I think that definitely is something that needs to happen. We have to remember what the intent of this area was, and it's for industrial, and then be able to add, you know, whatever may come after that. I think it's great, but we just don't want to scare away those, those makers that I think need to be part of Tempe. So I 100% support that. I think that's a great idea. A couple more things just really quick. And if we are going to put residents there, one thing to think about, and when it comes to these developments, is open space. Because I think that's going to be something that might be a little kind of a key, especially if we're going to make a walkable area, that, you know, open space would be really nice to consider within that, within that area. And of course, I have to mention it because Chief Reese is right here in the front, Station 2. I'm going to throw over to the city manager and say, we really need to work on Station 2 because I think that we've been talking about being remodeled and getting it, getting it modernized, even though it's a historic building practically, had to say it. But I think it's probably time, and especially I'm hopeful like Randy is, when people want to come and it's a really coveted area, you know, we want to make sure that we have the right public safety pieces in place. So I think that's something that we need to kind of put on the front burner. That's it. Thank you.
Councilman Navarro?
Definitely. Real big thank you to everybody out there. You know, this was impressive. We have four people on staff, primarily economic development and our, working with our codes and our, or other end of our development, so to speak, with, with the planning side. And I have to say, it's tremendous on what we do and what we can achieve with our group, and it's a small group, and it's just kudos to you guys for the projects you guys bring in and for the guidance you guys give us. When Randy obviously brought in this area, it was, it was interesting and intriguing. I was interested more so on the streetscape right of ways and all that other stuff. And I know now we're going to have a potential of biking from north, basically from the lake down to the, to Quanis Park, going through that area, which is going to be tremendous. And I think it's a great opportunity to really enhance those biking lanes and things like that. And when I came to that first meeting, I was just so impressed by the turnout. And I was just like, wow, people are interested in that. I didn't, I couldn't get a gauge on that. So that said a lot, that you guys are really taking advantage of shepherding this and working through some of the details, because it is a unique area with some high-end industrial use in there. So just real big thank you to you, and a real big thank to the community for the support and the feedback on that, because that really says a lot about what we're doing and what we're trying to achieve, so.
Thank you.
I want to thank staff as well and the working group at Command, especially Councilmember Keating, your leadership on this issue. You just were unrelenting and pushing forward in such a positive manner, and it's a lesson for us all. So thank you so much. We wouldn't be here if it weren't, pardon? He's unrelenting. We wouldn't be here if it weren't for you, Randy. I know it's our intention to create and spark affordable housing, workforce housing. It's so important for the community. We have a mixture of housing, affordable workforce, and market altogether. It's a healthy community. It's a healthier community, a happier community. So I'm really excited about the potential. I wish we could put some requirements in there. I know it's not zoning, but requirements that there, that it be affordable workforce elements included, but I realize we don't, we can't require it. But it's going to take some discipline from the council to make sure that we fulfill that in our decisions that we make. I also want to thank Larry DeGenis, who's been such an advocate for this and for his own neighborhood. Your voice has really been important as I've heard the discussions, the public discussions. And I know that just at that corner at Broadway, yes, Broadway and Hardy, my daughter lives very close to there. She's your, you're her neighborhood chair. There's been, I think, two fatalities in the past year and a half, and that is a cut-through street, Broadway East West. We need to, we need to continue the bike lanes and make sure that we have bike and pedestrian infrastructure that befits the neighborhood that we're going to be helping to create and spark. So thank you for bringing up those transportation issues. And Larry, especially to you, thank you for making that connection with transportation and health and safety.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next item, item 6B7 is introducing and holding the first public hearing and adopt an ordinance for amended planned area development overlay and development plan review for a new commercial development consisting of a four-story 150-key hotel in the PCC 2 zoning district on Lot 2 of Tempe Market Station, located at 1953 East Rio Salado Parkway. The applicant is Barry Riddell. The second and final public hearing is October 17th, 2017. This is a public hearing item. Would the applicant like to make a presentation?
Mayor, members of the council, very briefly, if I could get staff to pull it up. Wendy Riddell with the law firm, Barry Riddell, 6750 East Camembert. My pleasure to be here on behalf of SJJ Development for Tempe Market Station. This is a site, it's about an eight-and-a-half acre site located south of Rio Salado Drive between Smith between Smith and Perry. Its claim to fame, I'm told, is it was actually originally one of the sites of a brothel in Tempe, long before it was annexed into Tempe.
Was it historical?
Historical, long before my client owned it. He has come in, you can see he assembled the properties, he's now cleared the properties. As this council knows very well, it is part of the Smith Innovation Hub. We actually think there's an opportunity here to make it really a gateway to that hub, and that's part of why we're here today. We actually obtained entitlements on this site back in 2016, when those properties were assembled, we rezoned them to commercial. It was intended that at that time it would be kind of convenience commercial. So, we had four drive-throughs, we had fuel and things that were intended for that drive home. But working with economic development staff, being pushed to include this as part of that innovation hub, we think we have a slightly better plan here today. So, you'll see that we have actually included now a hotel, as well as removed some of the drive-through for retail, as well as a sit-down restaurant on that corner. Proposement, it removes the drive-through fuel sales, and then again responds to that Smith Hub, and you get a glimpse of the type of hotel brand. It's a new brand, actually, for Tempe, it's focused on health and wellness, it's pretty cool. And to give you an idea of what it looks like here, and then just very quickly to give you an idea of the type of retail that we're talking about as well. So, with that, happy to answer any questions that you may otherwise have.
Looks good. Councilwoman Navarro, Vice Mayor Keating?
No, thank you, and I appreciate you guys doing a little reorg on that side, I think it's appropriate. And with the things that are coming down the road in the future, too, I'm glad you got an eye for some of that, because I think this is a better project.
I think, we think so, too. So, thank you.
Sounds better. Councilmember Keating?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I mean, pretty much, I thought what Councilwoman Navarro just said, I think it's a great project, much better. Very pleased with what you brought back and look forward to supporting it.
Great, thank you very much.
Councilwoman, Vice Mayor?
Yes, so what are your plans for shading, both with possible solar installations?
I can't speak to possible solar installations, but I do know on the hotel itself, you'll see there's quite a few shade elements that have been incorporated. You can see right there in the front.
So, pardon? So, are those solar, you're saying?
No, I'm not saying they're solar, I'm saying they're shade components.
That's, it's a lot of hardscape. If you think about some permeable paving, you could put some trees in there that would increase the shade for those that are parking, but I'd really like to see some solar in this project. It's presumably going to have a shelf life of longer than, you know, 30, 40 years, and will be 120 degrees 30 days of the year by 2040, so we really need to think about investing in solar, and I'm hoping you'll consider that.
Understood, I'll certainly share that with my client.
Excuse me?
I said understood, I'll certainly share that with my client.
Great.
Councilmember Aradona Savage?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, thank you Wendy for being here, I really appreciate it. And I actually read through it and did notice there is additional landscaping, so you did change the landscaping from the original, and there is more trees and there's more vegetation, so thank you for that. So, I think that's addressing some of the concerns from where we were before, so. And I just want to say thanks to the economic development team, too, for, I think, reconnecting and trying to find a great project, I think, that fits really well for that area. I think you've done a really good job. And I know I had a chance to talk to you just a little bit, but I just want to reiterate, I think, I mean, this is a really key component of that street, and I think what you guys set down is going to be very iconic, and we talk about walkability, and we talk about shade, and the idea of it kind of like having been the entryway almost. So, you know, I would really focus on what that looks like from the streetscape perspective, and hopefully, I, I mean, I'm kind of excited about this hotel, I had to look it up, because I was like, what is, I thought it was maybe just a pretend thing that you put up there, but it's actually really a real thing. And I thought, oh, well, that sounds really cool. But, you know, with that, with that said, I'm sure they have their own design, and that's kind of their standard thing. But for us, I think, I, for me, it's just really important that streetscape gets nailed down, because you are, you're starting it, you're going to create that trend and how that continues. So, I think it's going to be really important that we get that right. And I know that you'll sit down and work at it and get something that looks really good, and we can all agree upon and be really proud of. So, I'm thankful that you came back to the table and brought your clients back, so tell them thank you for that, and we look forward for a really long partnership.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilwoman Navarro.
Yeah, I just want to add a piece to Councilmember Aradona, but the streetscape, how it mimics and how it plays a part with the mall across the street, I mean, that's one of the things, it's not fighting against it. It's complementary to what's going on within that section, within that area. So, it can, has a continuation for the other developments that come in there, they're actually going to start to mimic off and play off of each other, but it has to have some coordination, and I hope you will keep that in mind. I think they do a great job on the landscape across the street, Tempe Marketplace, tremendous, so.
Even though you're looking at the backs of all the buildings.
The backs of the building docks of the street.
But as you look at the landscape, though, it really is nice stuff, I mean, but I think you know what we're talking about, having that play with each other and...
And we are, just to add to that, we are working with Rebecca Rothman, with the art staff, with economic development, and looking at a possibility to kind of brand, help brand, be a part of branding that Smith Innovation Hub.
Yeah, exactly, so it's identity of that area, so.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, next item is item 6B8, is introduce and hold the first public hearing and adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of an easement for Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land at 56 South Priest Drive, identified by APN 12-124-27-013, and authorizing the mayor's disnee to execute an easement agreement and related documents. The second and final public hearing is October 17, 2019. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone wishing to address this on this item? Could you get my attention? Seeing none? Any comments from council? Seeing none? Last item on this section is item 6B9, is introduce and hold the first public hearing and adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor's disnee to execute an agreement granting a non-exclusive perpetual drainage easement to the Arizona Department of Transportation as part of the access drainage and retention easement agreement for property located on certain city-owned land, south of Warner Road and east of the interstate I-10. The second final public hearing is scheduled for October 17, 2019. This is a public hearing item. Anyone in the audience wanting to address us, or any council comment? Seeing none? Next item is our agenda items scheduled for a second public hearing and final adoption will be considered now. These items were read and introduced on September 12, 2019, and votes will be taken tonight. We already took care of item 6C1, move on to item 62, is to hold a second and final public hearing and adopt an ordinance for an amended planned area development overlay and a development plan review for a new six-story commercial development consisting of 100,000 square feet of offices at 999 Playa, located at 999 East Playa del Norte. The applicant is Urgent. I see we have the applicant coming forward, Ms. Vaz. You still awake?
Mayor, members of the council, if you recommend, Ms. Monjula Vaz, law firm of Gammage and Burnham. Since we did a full presentation last time, I'm happy just to answer any questions without doing a presentation, or happy to have a presentation at your desire.
Yep, this is, yes, Councilmember Adams?
Yes, so it's my understanding that you changed the age to 21, is that?
The next one.
Oh, that's the other one?
This is the office building.
Okay, okay. Sorry about that. Maybe that should be 21, too.
There will be a forever 21.
I was ahead of myself.
Yeah, that's okay, no, but I did that, yes.
Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us on this item? Could you please get our attention? Seeing, Ms. Vaz, any comments from the council? Or Ms. Vaz? If not, it's been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Aradona Savage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes.
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Passes seven to zero. Thank you.
There you go.
Here we go.
Item 6C3 is to hold a second and final public hearing for adopt an ordinance for an amended planned area development overlay and development plan review for a new 11-story mixed-use development consisting of 122 dwelling units and commercial uses for the Hilo, or Hilo, Tempe, located at 701 South Mill Avenue. If you're in Hawaii, it'd be Hilo, but we're in Tempe, so it's Hilo.
Hilo.
The applicant, this is a public hearing item, the applicant like to make a statement? Presentation?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just want to make a couple of statements regarding some of the comments we had last time. First of all, as we talked about, you know, we talked a little bit about cosigners or age restrictions. We've had, what we would like to do is agree to have an age restriction of 21 years old. As we kind of worked through, there are some people in their, you know, with the late 20s, I will certainly have a conversation with Councilwoman Navarro about it when I graduated from law school, when I was 26, you know, or 27, I needed a cosigner. So, you know, late 20s or early 30s, you still need a cosigner, but we think 21 accomplishes kind of what the council is trying to do. So, that's one thing we'd like to put on the record. Just briefly for the vice mayor, in terms of landscaping, we talked about, a little bit about the landscape percentages, so I did put the landscape percentages up there so you can see when M7 was three, was all three parcels, kind of the building coverage, landscape coverage, and at the A grade, landscape coverage. And now, as we've divided them up into three parcels, they're a little bit different, but it's, they're generally consistent, that we have 80%, building coverage, 33% versus 42 landscape coverage, and then the A grade landscape coverage. So, I just wanted to give you that. And then finally, I have completed the Affordable Housing impact statement. I've talked to Levon. I did it.
You're the first.
Yes, and Levon, I had a lovely conversation with Levon. Levon sat here all night with me to give you this comment, but we did talk about, right, Levon? So, but yes, I submitted it, he's awesome, you know, a nice little chat, I gave him all the rents, and certain, you know, you know, some of the rents, the rents will qualify, some of them do qualify from the workforce standpoint. I think a lot of the conversation we've had today about housing diversity, this does a couple of things, it does bring housing diversity into property, we have workforce, we have a bunch of, you know, it gives you different options in terms of housing, it also has the step-backs that we talked about along Mill, so I won't belabor the point. We're really excited to bring this project to Tempe, I think co-living is an interesting aspect, I think this project's going to bring a lot to the community and on Mill. Happy to answer any other questions.
Mayor? Councilmember Adams?
So, I love the project, and actually, both of them. I would like to, I mean, you've done a good job at addressing our concerns, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Has been a motion by Councilmember Adams?
I just want to make a quick comment.
Yes, Councilmember Keating?
Thank you, Ms. Vaz, for hearing our concerns, I think the age restriction is fine. I will say, I had really good credit at 21, not so great at like 23, and just embarrassing from then, really until about 31, and it kind of sort of, anyway, thank you very much, I really appreciate you hearing our concerns.
I also want to say thank you, no, thank you, I mean, you graduated at 26, so did I, but you came with a law degree. Had a great time.
Councilmember Aradona Savage?
Thank you very, really quick, I got to tell you, this is a tough one for me, it really, really is, and I know you know why. I've always been really concerned about the underparking, and this is significantly underparking, I could probably get away with 10 or under, but when it's way above that, you know, triple that, that's really worrisome for me. I have to say, though, you guys have been very pleasant to work with, and I think the struggle for me is I appreciate the effort that you have put into mitigating traffic and to encouraging people not to drive. And so, that's why I'm a little bit torn, I appreciate the fact that you created an age restriction, not everybody would want to do that, but I think that's a really great thing to do. And I did check with staff in regards to the fact that, you know, this is a new concept, something that we've never done, and I, that's another reason why I'm thinking, well, you know, you just don't know unless you try it. And I appreciate the fact that they could be converted into something different, because shared living is something that we've never did, which we have done in the past, but just a shared kitchen, right? So, this is a completely new, different concept, and nobody really knows what is going to happen. I never saw anything about best practices or this being successful anywhere else, so I have to tell you, it's been really a struggle for me, but you guys have really delivered on, I think, a lot of our concerns and our questions, and I have to say thank you so much for that, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
End of the day.
And I do like the building, I will say. I did tell you that from the very beginning, it's a very great-looking building, so thank you for that, I definitely do appreciate it.
Vice Mayor Cubey?
We're seeing projects like this, and starting to see projects like this, because we've invested so much in a multimodal city, and the streetcar about to merge another year or so, it's another reason why I think people that are attracted to living there are not necessarily going to be people who use a car or need a car. So, I appreciate that we're maturing in that way, and I like the project.
Thank you.
Ms. Vaz, I do want to, I do appreciate you listening to the concerns of the council, and you, I've met with you before with your client, with Cor, and I do appreciate you coming back with a good-looking project. With that, we have a motion, and we have a second by Councilmember Chin. Okay, so there's been a motion by Councilmember Adams, a second by Councilmember Chin, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Thank you.
That motion passes seven to zero.
Get that out there.
Appreciate your support.
All right, next item, item 6C4, is to hold a second and final public hearing and adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement for Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land, located at 1389 East Apache Boulevard, and authorizing the mayor's disnee to execute an easement agreement and related documents. This is a public hearing item, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us on item 6C4? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none?
Motion approved.
Second.
There's been a motion to approve item 6C4, it's been seconded by Vice Mayor Cubey, motion by Councilmember Keating, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, that motion does pass. Item 6C5 is to hold a second and final public hearing and adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of an easement to Arizona Public Service over a certain city-owned land near 525 West Lakeside Drive, identified by APN 124-24-027N, and authorizing the mayor's disnee to execute an easement agreement and related documents. This is a public hearing item, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us, or is there a motion from the council on item 6C5?
Moved.
It's moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Councilmember Adams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion passes seven to zero. Next item under this section is item 6C6, to hold a second and final public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a non-exclusive underground utility easement to the Arizona Board of Regents, Arizona State University with the existing right-of-ways of University Drive, McAllister Avenue, and Kruger Street, also known as Tyler Street, and authorizing the mayor's disnee to execute an easement agreement and related documents. This is a public hearing item, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us, or a motion on item 6C6?
Moved.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Vice Mayor Cubey, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, that motion passes seven to zero. Next item, item 6C7, is to hold a second and final public hearing for, to adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of a power distribution easement to Salt River Project Agricultural Improvement and Power District over certain city-owned land, located at 8607 South McLintock Drive, near Estrada Park, and authorizing the mayor or his disnee to execute such easement and related documents. This is a public hearing item, is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us, or is there a motion from council?
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Adams, seconded by Councilmember Aradona Savage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion does carry. Last item, item 6C8, is to hold a second and final public hearing and adopt an ordinance authorizing the granting of an easement to Southwest Gas Corp. over a certain city-owned land located at 5400 Southwest Door Drive, and authorizing the mayor or his disnee to execute an easement agreement and related documents. This is a public hearing item, is there anyone willing to address us, or is there a motion Is there anyone willing to address us or is there a motion on item 68?
Okay.
It's removed by Councilmember Chin, seconded by Councilmember Keating. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, that motion does pass. Next, current announcements. I think we have to start down here. Councilmember Chin.
No, no.
Councilmember Adams.
I guess, I just want to point out, I want to give some thank yous out tonight. I had my join Jennifer last week and Tina Sleeper and Craig Hayden and Colden Balfour and Kerry Reither and Sean Wagner did a great job helping me out, especially Tina and Craig who did a presentation about the Water Smart Program and Kiwanis Park Master Plan. So special shout out to those employees. Also, we had a, a meeting with the Rhythm Development and Shelley Seiler and Ryan Mavisk and Andrew Ching attended that, so thank you so much for attending and, and helping out with that. It was a very spirited discussion and I think we'll have some solutions in the near future. Secondly, I'd like to just remind everyone that Oktoberfest is coming up. It's a great event. It's October 11th through the 13th at Tempe Town Lake. It is free to get in and it's fun for all ages. So come on out, enjoy the cooler weather and celebrate Oktoberfest. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Cubey.
Yes, thank you. So a young man I know, I've seen grow up, is running a 5K run-walk this weekend at Kiwanis and it's to benefit Gathering Humanity, which is a Tempe, Tempe nonprofit that helps refugees and asylees assimilate and to give them aid and comfort in these very difficult times. And he is raising money to outfit backpacks for young kids who are asylees and refugees who are either in our, in our town or leaving our town to go elsewhere, but it's an amazing project, so I urge you all to support it. You don't have to run or walk, you can just go and, and online and, and donate monies for the backpacks. So thank you so much, Curtis, this Eagle Scout project. And then I have my Connecting with Cubey event last Saturday of the month, so it's 1 to 4 at the library right outside Connections Cafe. And so whatever is on people's minds, I expect to be talking about speed limits and the Urban Core Master Plan, whatever you'd like to, whatever is your concern. And it's not necessarily meant to be a formal presentation, but drop in, office hours, whatever is on your mind and look forward to seeing residents there on Saturday.
Councilmember Navarro.
Thank you, Mayor. This Saturday, which is in two days, at 11:00 AM to noon here at the library on the third floor, uh, second floor, all right, Councilmember Keating and Councilmember Arredondo Savage and myself will be hosting the faith-based community forum, basically trying to make connection within our faith-based community and within the services that we provide within the city of Tempe and connect them to other services outside to help people within need. A great opportunity if you are with, within any of our churches within the, within the Tempe area or you just want to come out to learn the process of what this is and how we can enhance and better communicate with each other's resources and define better good in providing services to people. So that is this Saturday, September 28th at 11:00 AM. In addition to that, on October 19th, I'll be having the original coffee talk with Java with Joel. We're gonna be touching on some stuff on homelessness, on what we are up to date on right now, and then probably talk about mass casualty incidences and what to recognize and do's and don'ts. We have guidance through Alice as the program that can actually give people some awareness. So I think it'd be a great event to go to. That's October 19th at a location to be here at the library. So, hope to see y'all.
Thank you. Councilmember Arredondo Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things, just to remind people that College Connect is back, so College Connect 101 and a quick college fair, if you want to go do, hit that up before you come to our interfaith meeting. It is at the library at 9:45, so 10 o'clock, and it's really great because we will have representatives from all of our universities and colleges there. You can have one-on-ones, nice chat, just learn a little bit about getting to college and how we can help you do that in transition. And I just want to say a great thank you to Adrian Castillo, who was here earlier, who is a staff member that works with the mayor's youth advisory commission, but also works with the College Connect partners and is just doing a really outstanding job. So we're really lucky to have great people in this community. So if you have a student, whether you're in high school or middle school and you thinking about going to college, it's never too early to just start that process. So thank you for that and make sure you can make it out this Saturday at the library at 10 o'clock. And is that it, or is there one more? So we always are talking about communicating and, and I had some residents recently just asking, you know, well, what's going on? What are some of the top issues? And it's just, this is just a reminder of the Tempe Forum and if there are certain current issues that are happening within the city of Tempe, you will see them posted on Tempe Forum. And really, you can just go to your web browser, type in Tempe Forum, because I did it a few times just to see and it'll actually take you right to that, that page. And I want to say right now, there are three different items that are on there. It is, I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it is the Grand Canal and I think it is our rate study. And there's one other thing on there right now. Somebody help me out. Nikki, what is it? Where is it?
Transit shelters.
Transit shelters. I don't know why I didn't remember that one. Transit shelters. So it's just a really great way to let us know what you think as a community member, as a business owner, somebody that works, lives, plays in Tempe. It's really important that we hear what you think because we utilize all that feedback to help us make better decisions. So anytime that there is a current issue, go check out Tempe Forum because we want to hear what you think. That's all. Thanks, Mayor.
Vice Mayor Cubey.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of mine were already mentioned, so I'll just briefly highlight them. Faith and Opportunity Summit tomorrow. It's all Joel's slide. It's also on both of our Facebook pages if you want to attend that. Don Carlos Awards is next Wednesday. I'm looking forward to being there and I'm sure most of my colleagues know, all will be there as well as we celebrate this year's winners, Chris Bush, Bernadette Coggins and Brooke Schmidt. True story, it's also my birthday and I only bring that up so that you all, members of the public, have enough time to think about gift ideas before next Wednesday. And then also Oktoberfest, which Councilmember Adams brought up. It's another true story. I bought, I drank beer there and I bought real Lederhosen from Germany and it made me regret skipping all those leg days or at least, you know, the gym altogether. But I will be, I will be looking the park.
Will you be working out?
I have not, that was the point. So I am looking forward to Oktoberfest at Tempe Beach Park and of course, that goes on to benefit Tempe Sister Cities, which is a fantastic program in our city. So I hope to see you at all those events, if you can make them.
Wait, one thing, one thing, Mayor.
Nope, you already done.
No, 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 no.
Nope. Sorry, done.
The, the, oh, God's gonna kill me right now, but the concert at Hayden Square. This Saturday, Hayden.
Hay Day.
Hay Day, that's right, the Hay Day, right there on Fourth Street and Mill in the little area, Hayden Square. Roger Klein and Peacemakers, Pistoleros, who?
Wise Monkey Orchestra.
Yeah, so 2 PM till 11:00 AM. It's gonna be a great concert this Saturday, must go.
All right. Lot of been said. One comment I want to mention, on Saturday morning, it's the 11th Annual Tim Barber Walk for Pop. I had the pleasure of knowing Tim Barber. He was a sergeant in the Tempe Police Department and unfortunately, he did pass away from prostate cancer and this is an awareness, it's been happening for 11 years. I'm at the Kiwanis Park. It's a great event, there's a lot of people there and it's really important that guys get checked. So there's an opportunity. I hope to see you there this Saturday at Kiwanis Park. Registration does start at 6:30 and if you want to look at it, it's prostatecheckup.org. That's the webpage. Sorry, I don't have a slide for you. And then of course, we want to wish the Devils good luck tomorrow night against Cal, at Cal. And then we also have the anniversary of Tempe Leadership tomorrow night as well at Rolling Hills Golf Course. With that, that concludes our public comments. We do have public appearances, so we do have a scheduled public appearance, but I don't know, is, is more below, is she here? So according to Arizona, me, I have some cards, so according to Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed on this agenda. Matters discussed by the public during public appearances cannot be discussed by the city unless they are specifically on this agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker and speakers' visual aids and recorded tapes are not allowed, but members of the public shall refrain from making any personal, impertinent or slanderous remarks or become boisterous while addressing the city council attending this meeting. Unauthorized remarks from the audience clapping, stomping their feet, stomping their feet is not permitted. So before I go there, there's one public comment I forgot to mention and I want to thank Holly Rosenthal for years of service. I think your last day is what, tomorrow? Saturday. So thank you, Holly, for, for the time you've been with us. I know you've done some good things and we wish you well in your next adventure. I think you go into some city to the west, so good luck. So with that, I have some cards. First card I have is Rashad Shabazz. And I'm assuming Simone Shabazz is not here? I'm looking for Phil Yates, is he still here? James Beschoff? Wow.
We got last.
I know. Alana Billingsley? Oh, she already spoke, that's right. And then Phil?
Hetmansberger.
How do you pronounce your last name?
Hetmansberger.
Okay, I'm trying to read you handwriting.
Speak as the Deutsch, nein?
Speak as the Deutsch, indischen.
I'm here before the members and it revolves around a tree, otherwise left of it. A year ago, when the major storm fell through, a tree fair fell down and in the process, it kind of broke things up for us. The house lives, or is down that way for you. And the, when they, the tree fell, cut it up except for the very bottom part. The very bottom part was, we, I had them cut it off right there, flat, a flat top, so that it could be used for other purposes like putting a table over the top of it, have a chance to use it for, just like you would on a patio kind of thing. And I've had some difficulty with the code people because I feel that they have to have it ground down all the way and dug out. And for that, it's primarily concerning to us because of my wife. She died of glioblastoma and in the process, it was one of those kind of things, it's like an honor for us. And that's what makes a lot, means a lot to us. And would like to have them, have you, give me a chance to have that, maintain that stump, quote unquote, and hopefully goodwill will come to all of us.
Council and Mayor and Council, I just appreciate you taking the time to listen to my dad and his feedback. I mean, it was, it was almost a 40-year-old Aleppo pine tree that my parents planted when they moved into the house together to build that life and that home and that space. And while my sister and I grew up in Chandler, we went to school at Arizona State University. Mom was a teacher in Tempe for over 30 years and so we feel like this is an incredible way to be able to honor her. I have taken time to be able to decorate this stump in such a way that I feel like it would make her proud. It's got blue in it, it's a blue vase, there's a picture around and I would be happy to email that to the council communicators as well, so you have my perspective along with my dad's. And yeah, I, the thing about it is, and the key takeaway for us is you, many of you know my father and many of you know our family and the thing about it is, is we believe in public service and we believe in code and we understand that there are places and times for these things. But there are also memorials and things like that that can be put in place and that's where we're, we're calling on that. Grief happens in a lot of different ways and we feel like this is the way that our family is able to work through the grieving process for ourselves. And this process, it's been terrible. Losing her in 2016 in February and then losing the tree two years later feels like that's kind of just created that space. So this is the way that we're really trying to work through it. I thank you so much. Five seconds to spare. Thank you so much for your time.